Recording has started.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It's Wednesday, the 3rd of December. And I'm calling the meeting to order at, looks like, 6:32. Members present, from my left.
Lynda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Tim Jennings.
Paul Bianco.
Kurt Carhart. All members.
And Rob left the room. And I don't know if there's anybody... Okay, well, we're all here. Nobody is, uh...
There isn't anybody online.
Nobody is online? Do we have any visitors online?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Rob's team staff. Nobody's waiting.
Um, Dan, could I borrow your agenda?
Certainly.
Thank you. Uh, there were no hearings, no conceptuals. Um, we have a long evening ahead of us, so I propose moving the minutes to the end of the meeting. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Um, our business this evening is the revisions to the HOP grant. And for the benefit of the public, this is a work session for the board, and we'll take comments when we are done with our discussion, okay? Tim? What?
You want to elevate?
I, yeah, I should elevate Kurt.
Sure.
Kurt, you are hereby elevated to replace me. Is somebody... What's going on?
We're opening up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I can open the Word, so I'm gonna turn it into a PDF. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Uh... (laughing) Can you, if you save as dot PDF, I think the formatting of the table of contents...
Oops, somebody's tapping on me.
Yes, sorry, do...
Yeah, scramble?
I can quickly do it on my machine. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Guys can start chatting.
Yeah, we can probably just go ahead and get started. So just a couple of comments. We're at 143 pages, and I think the existing zoning ordinance is a little shorter than that.
Mm-hmm.
So in some ways, it may seem that we've gone the wrong direction, but a lot of that has to do with the size of the headers and footers. There's a lot more white space in the, between sections and so forth, so I think that'll, that'll...
You still have this or that in there, too.
Yeah, so, yeah. There's some sections that we'll drop, but, um, anyway. Skipping over to the beginning. So Kurt and Paul and David sent me nice, thorough, edited comments for edits and suggestions. I wasn't quite sure how to handle those, so what I ended up doing is if those had, were just a matter of wording change, and just maybe reads better, that sort of thing, I just went ahead and made those changes. And if you made the suggestion, when we get to that part, if you can remember it, just, just make note of it to everyone else. There was also some things that I discovered were, were missing, and thought about how to reformat to fit those, and so we'll encounter those.
Mm-hmm.
Different, different color fonts. Yeah. Oh, and the other thing, this is all mostly in 12 points, so we reduced the font size when we finished documents, and it shrunk things a bit.
A little bit.
Anyway, um, so, you gotta be careful that we don't get too far into the weeds on any one topic tonight, or I think we'll, we just won't make it through the, the exercise. But if we need to, we will. So, the first part, introduction and purpose, which is the following, Section 103, purpose. What's, what's your pleasure there?
Just, can you always say what page number you're on, just so that...
Yes, page 13.
Yep, just so we don't have zero confusion.
Yep. Page 13, Section 103, line 282. So there's what's in the existing ordinance in blue, and then I drafted something in green. Frankly, I'm not all that enamored with what I wrote some months ago, now that I look at it again, but, um, my comment was we keep the original, possibly improve on it, but the original is fine.
Yeah.
The problem I had with the original is to provide adequate light and air, to promote the health and general welfare. It kind of, you know, bleakly helps that, I suppose, but, um, anyway, I, what I would prefer to do is that, unless we're really strongly liking the, what's in the existing ordinance, and maybe we are, is I'd like to have another crack at that. That's all I'm gonna say about it.
Just look at the calendar?
I know, I know.
Tim, I, I would suggest, if you do find yourself taking another pass at that, look at the RSA, because I'm pretty sure a lot of the language in our zoning ordinance is verbatim from the RSA. And while you do have some freedom, I would take what's in statute as a very strong guide.
Okay. Yeah. Shall we move on?
Yes. Hi, Renee.
Hello.
Hi, Renee. Why don't you come up to the table?
All right. I don't think there was a problem with page 15, 16. That, oh, so, Section 108.3 on page 16, line 375. That is verbatim out of the City of Lebanon. In fact, this whole piece here is on conflicts. I'm not sure I understand it and what the implications are, but I figured it's stood the test of time and legal scrutiny, and...
Mm-hmm.
It's probably fine. But we can debate that.
I read it through four or five times before I could figure out the meaning of what they did. And I noticed that in all of the Lebanon extracts, is that they are sometimes quite wordy.
Yep.
But after the third or fourth time, the meaning comes out.
You figure it out.
And, and it's relevant.
Yeah.
Paul, do you think the wordiness can be massaged to make it more readable, but still maintain the, the meaning?
I think for the next version, I know we're against the clock right now to get this moving. I think as it stands, it serves its purpose.
Right.
Okay. Tim, could we go back to the, I guess it's, um, 106 Administration?
Yep.
And this in the green, which is question, decision needed. I wanted clarification on the process. If the zoning administrator is unavailable, or the seat is vacant, does the town manager perform those duties? Because I know that from the past, we've had a circuit rider from regional planning who came in and took over our staffing. I just wanna, wanna be correct. Rob, do you have...
I think the circuit rider was acting as the administrator.
So that, and that's the last phrase in that whole section, was the town manager shall appoint an acting administrator, which would be the circuit rider, whoever he's designated.
But what it says is the town manager shall perform the duties.
Or, or... Or point, yeah, yeah. Okay. Paul, point. Okay. Um, page 17. Let's see. Can you give line numbers, too? Yes. Paul, I think you had pointed out, um...
Which one's that?
Let's see, uh, no, it wasn't here. It wasn't here, I'm sorry.
Good.
Yep. Uh, page 17, I didn't have any, so, 18, 19, um... All that in black, of course, just as reminders from the City of Lebanon's ordinance. Boy, did this change the name of this community. I did alter 202.5 slightly. Yeah. And I need to start referring to...
Line 506.
The, um, copy on the, on the screen. Rob, can you scroll that up?
506.
Yep. So there's, there's lettering in red here that won't, that doesn't, doesn't show up in your printed copy, because these are the last-minute changes. Scroll up just a little bit further. I meant down.
Oops, sorry. The other, the other off.
The other way.
Somewhere in there?
I'll say scroll forward or scroll backward. How about that?
This is backward.
Yeah. Yep, okay, scroll forward, so...
Before we start the discussion, may I ask a question, David? I noticed the header's different than this print version. How different are the two versions?
Only slightly, and, and I'm gonna point them out on here. Okay. As we encountered them.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Yeah.
Um, okay, keep going. Stop at 490?
Yeah, 487, line 377. Paul had pointed out that we hadn't, we hadn't followed the convention that when you first encounter a term, and you're gonna use an abbreviation thereafter, and this is the place, first time the zoning board of adjustment term is used, and that's why the parentheses in red there, ZBA, pursuant to Section 904 and line 487. And then afterwards, it's all, it's all ZBA.
Okay.
Mine doesn't say that.
Well, no, he's, he's...
He's pointing it out.
He's pointing it out, 'cause that just got added.
Oh.
Um, and what, what number, David?
Um, 481, or actually, 482.
Okay. Scroll back, David.
We talk about a conditional use permit, and we refer to some other section. But we would need to pass...
Right.
...a conditional use ordinance, as it were.
Yeah, so, so... Rob, just scroll down to Section 202.4. You'll note here, it says reserve. And here's the reason I did, did this. I mean, we don't have to do it this way, but this is why I suggested we do it. The section on conditional use permits in the City of Lebanon ordinance, which I started out having in this version, is, is got about seven or eight subsections to it. It's a pretty lengthy piece. And one of our previous meetings, we decided we didn't have enough time to explore that and to figure out how to make it work. And so, I says to myself, well, all right. And we did, we did agree that next year we revisit the issue, because I think we, we like the, the expected results of the conditional use permit process. It says, all right, well, let's set it up so that if we wanna add it, all we gotta do is, the warrant article would be, change Section 202.4 to read dust and stuff.
Yeah.
It would fit right here. There's several references to this section, which doesn't have any meat to it, in other places in the ordinance. And so, rather than having to go back and change all those if we added it, I just left all those in here, and it refers you to a dead end. That's, that was my reasoning for it.
Okay.
Um...
Yeah.
I, I guess I would prefer that they be taken out, just for the sake of clarity, but, um, just keep that in the back of your head.
It would be a chore. In the very next, uh, line 503, permitted land use table, Section 202.5, it's, it's used right there in the first sentence. It's also printed in the conditional land use table, but we don't, we don't ever use the code. It's all there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of all set up to allow us to be able to make this change next year without any, uh, great grief.
No, I, I understand your reasoning.
Shall we move on?
Let's...
Okay. Um, I think we're in the Enfield Village District now, page 21. So, we've got a choice here as to what we wanna use for the purpose of the Enfield Village District section. And I think I got, well, we only had a couple of votes, but it seemed to be leaning towards the Upper Valley. Renee's version.
The teens.
Purple.
The teens.
That's in the purple. Anyone here to suggest, uh...
I'm thinking I like...
Yeah.
All right. Let's go with purple.
Does that mean the greens get crossed out?
That means the green leaves.
Deleted.
The green at the top, the green at the bottom needs to stay, 'cause that, that's basically introduction of the, the next section. But that doesn't really make any, uh, that's the only job it does, is just to lead into the next section. All right. So, um, Paul had suggested on line 540, 203.2, permitted land uses. I changed that slightly based on Paul's recommendation, so, scroll forward, Rob, slightly, right there. So, um, permitted land uses permitted by right by conditional use, well, okay, simplified it. Permitted land uses by right by conditional use and by ZBA special exception for this district are shown.
In permitted land use, too?
Yeah. Slight wording change, but it's, it rolls off the tongue a little easier.
And ZBA, I think that's the first time it's mentioned?
The second time.
It is, so we already written of, the zoning board of...
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So that's a time...
None of mine, and not necessary, but, um, just, if you are going through an editing, the "of" this article is just redundant, 'cause there's only one Section 202.5. So if you wanna save like a lot, like, in this, in this case, you actually save the full line. Say it again? The, the last three words, the "of" this article, or two which appears a lot of the time. You don't have to go through and change it. I'm saying it's redundant, because there's only one section in 202.5.
Right.
So you can just make it...
Oh, the words "of" this article.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I wouldn't even bother spending time on it, really, but if you happen to be someplace, in all of those cases, there's only one section, so there's no, no need to refer back to the article. Yeah, I wonder if it should say, Article II, Section 202.5.
I think, I think what you meant was "of" this ordinance, of, of this document.
No, it was really referring to Article II.
Okay.
And maybe I should just say exhibited in Article II, Section 202.5. That would be...
That sounds pretty clear.
I think consistent with the others. Okay. Next page, line 546 or so. Line numbers are a little bit different here, but, um, the table. Worded slightly differently in the residential housing density limitation, if you look up on the screen. This came from, it was Paul or somebody.
Yeah, you got it down here.
I just asked to have DU defined in the table.
Yep. And I, yep, wanted to put...
And it's there, great. Looks good.
Yeah. DU equals dwelling units.
Yeah.
On that subject, it might be helpful, somewhere at the very beginning, there's a list of all the abbreviations, just one page. And ZBA stands for X, Z, zoning board of adjustment. DU stands for density...
Dwelling units.
Dwelling units.
Right.
That way, everything's on one page, and then if there's, we miss something in the documents, at least it's there.
Yeah, okay.
We suggested that, yeah.
Well, we did put, it is in the land use table at the very top, and the fact it appears at the top of each page of the land use table. I mean, it doesn't define ZBA or anything.
Right, I mean, that's, you know, the little things like that. So it's, you just say that, what's on the, what you have on the land use, and then any other ones that sort of pop up, just put it all on one page.
Question?
That way, that way it's there.
Yeah.
Question, why is the 100-foot setback from prime wetlands crossed out?
Yeah, because this district doesn't border prime wetlands.
Yeah, but, prime wetlands are a designation, any wetland can be designated through the pro, if you go through the process. It's a, it's a special designation that's applied to a wet, specific, to a wetland.
I can leave it in.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it should be left there, just so, uh, someone in the future doesn't misunderstand.
Well, someone in the present.
So as a, as a summary table, note the, the sentence at the very bottom of the table. It's the quick reference, guys, CT deals below, and when you go to the details, you'll, you'll get all that stuff. But I'm, I'm happy to leave that in.
Yeah.
That was just a, it's helped to remove a few characters, that's all. Yeah, okay, the road frontage thing. Now, this is where we could get into the weeds. Renee and I went round and round on that, and...
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Do you, do you feel like you have a definitive answer on...
I mean, I think it, um, I don't think I have it printed with me, but I think it goes back to, if you're gonna go to 15 feet, um, which thereby could create, well, if you're at 15 feet, you require some, some form of road frontage.
Right.
Um, so you wouldn't have the backlot situation. You'd have flag lots. But you're saying that they would have to own that 15 feet. They wouldn't be able to do it via easement. So at least by designating a road frontage, you don't have the easement parameter that we were worried about, with like, the no frontage means you could have a backlot, and you'd have to have an easement over somebody else's driveway, and then you'd have to have all that verbiage from Lebanon's, so that it's covered. But I think with the 15, 'cause we're going back and forth between 15 and 50, right, just lessening it, 'cause right now it's currently 75. So even if you went to 50 feet, you're still lowering it, you're giving some variability there and flexibility. And if you wanted to go down to 15, I think you do need to leave the verbiage in there about driveway requirements needing to be met, to ensure that.
Yes, so scroll forward, Rob. Let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a wee bit further. So there's a, there's a reference here to Article 6, Section 602. And unfortunately, Rob, without the, the navigation screen of Word, it's gonna be hard for you to scroll down so we could see that.
Article 6.
Let's see.
Section 602.
I mean... It's on page, uh, 102.
I mean, there's a, what is the minimum driveway which required? And the least...
Well, the driveway itself, I don't think we have it...
No, I mean, I understand that public works has a driveway permit, and must list.
They've got to have a, they've got to be a minimum for a driveway permit.
Yeah. You can't say I have one foot for my driveway and get a permit.
Well, a 10-foot lane is...
Yeah, but what's the permit say? That's what I'm questioning. What is the permit requirements? Maybe on the town website, I don't know.
Can we just make a reference that a driveway permit needs to be...
An approved driveway permit.
Permit is required for subdivision.
Right.
And I think that's very important, but I mean, if...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, right, if we're saying 15 feet, and the driveway premises minimum 20 feet, we're gonna be like, well...
Which is it?
Yeah.
But, to me, the drive, the approved driveway permit's the more important piece than what the actual footage is.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, because that could change over time.
Right. And, well, and it's going to vary depending on site limits.
Right.
Yeah, you know, it's not, not every single spot is the same.
Driveway shall be placed no closer than 40 feet from a street intersection, driveway grade excess, border, doesn't hit me...
grade excess, border, doesn't give me. Maximum is twenty. Doesn't give a minimum.
Well, that's up of ramp.
Driveway shall be a minimum of twelve.
Twelve feet when within the right of way. Twelve feet, so fifteen.
Just fair.
Yeah, it's fair.
And I suppose if you say like uncovering all of the driveway requirements, then it covers that forty foot needed at an intersection.
And there was a radius as well.
Yeah.
I mean, can we, can we just say that a driveway permit's required for subdivision?
Right. Yeah. But the, and the minimum.
And the minimum for fifteen feet.
Right, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
If he can't, if you still can't get a driveway permit because.
Then you don't get the subdivision.
Then you don't get the subdivision.
Right, right, because you're too close to an intersection or someone else's driveway.
Or the radius is wrong.
Or second, your part of the driveway is right on your property line.
Right.
Things like that could come into play.
But you can't get a driveway permit till you get a subdivision approved, right? I mean, you could, you know what the standards are.
Right.
So no sense applying for one if you can't meet the standards.
Right.
The subdivision should show, subdivision regulations should require on the plan to show where the driveway is gonna be, correct?
Yeah, well, this may be, this may be just.
We can require, I mean, I think they need to have sort of town approval, you know, even if it's not the official signed document.
Right.
DPW needs to review the driveway plan, because we are talking about small lots with small accesses.
Right.
These are, these are the sort of the outliers, and.
Yeah.
You know, you need to know that before you do the subdivision, and honestly, the property owner's gonna wanna know before they do the subdivision.
Right.
Because if they subdivide, then they can't build anything.
Right.
So I've got.
They could merge.
They could spend another eight hundred dollars. So I've got one lot, then I wanna create a flag lot in the back.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna make one additional lot out of this. Do I have to follow the subdivision rules, regulations?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
You're subdividing.
Well, I know, but I didn't know if there are two or more, you have to go, you know, whatever, but.
There's a driveway standard for three or more.
And that you can only do individual lots subdivided so many times where you have to.
What, every, yeah.
There's a period of time, see, you have like a hundred acres, subdivided one lot every year.
And you do what created.
My universe is major.
Right.
Regardless.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, so, so let's say I've got a hundred-foot depth front lot that I'm gonna carve off a driveway to give to the back lot.
Yep.
And I'm thinking most folks will want more than fifteen feet. You're gonna have snow, you know, where you gonna put the snow on the.
Jonesville Road, what's his name? Well, Windsor, LaRue's, I forget his last name, Tony.
Tony.
Tony. Yeah, yeah, go Tony.
Yeah, they're.
He had like fifteen, twenty feet or something. Easements.
Right.
Two hundred, three hundred, four hundred feet long.
Yeah, so, so if we're saying fifteen feet's the minimum, there's no reason why they couldn't be wider.
Oh, yeah.
It's up to the person subdividing the lot.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I mean, if, you know, if it felt more comfortable, like you could go twenty-five if you're worried about snow on either side of a twelve-foot driveway.
You know, well, that's what I was worried about, but as more I think about it, I don't, I don't know why one would put themselves in that position.
Yeah.
Well, it's, because the person subdividing is gonna sell.
It might not.
And doesn't care.
Sell both.
And the new owner looks at it in the spring or summer and doesn't realize.
Yeah.
Where's the plug, gonna put the snow?
I guess for reference.
But that's, that becomes their issue.
For reference to like Town of Orford on the circuit rider over there, they don't have zoning, but they do have subdivision regulations, and within their subdivision regulations, they have a fifty-foot requirement to subdivide any lots there. And I've had a few folks, you know, call up and ask about it, but even though they don't have zoning, they do have that one requirement via subdivision, so it is interesting.
With maximum flexibility.
Yeah, we're trying, we're focused on small lots downtown in the village.
Yeah.
That enables people to do more than what they have, so I guess I'm okay with the fifteen. Now, that's not gonna run afoul of the state RSA, is it?
So the flag lots, basically, there is verbiage, but you have in this one that was sent out, which I think you still have in there, starting on line twenty-seven ninety-two of flag lots and back lots. I think the only thing you'd have to keep is, yeah, right there, creating a flag lot split shall provide fifteen feet of frontage and meet the minimum lot area requirements, and keep that A and B. So I think somewhere that first section needs to be kept. The number three and below have to do with no frontage, so you don't have to worry about that. But I think the verbiage of that front, and if you included that in the, either leave it here under the Article Six, or it's under subdivisions as flag lots.
Yeah.
So you could reserve it if you needed to, or just put it in the article.
These sections feel like they probably ought to be in the, well, let me back up.
In the district.
Yeah, in the district that they apply to.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, except you're gonna have to put it in every district then.
Well, it'd be three.
Well, yeah, but in the future, it'll be seven.
Yes.
Why don't we just say in the section where.
Right.
This applies to all, it's not townwide, this is a townwide requirement.
Yeah, it's gonna be a townwide requirement.
Well, so, the way this is, in the purple, the way it's written, it applies only to these three districts.
Right.
What if we said right now that it's gonna, it's gonna be a townwide requirement?
So if someone's looking up R three, they've gotta go find this in somewhere else?
No.
No, no.
Because.
Or have a sentence that says for flag lots refer to.
Yeah. So would we be changing R three, R five CICO very much if we had this provision apply to them as well?
Well, I, well, I'm not gonna say you're not going to, but I doubt that you're gonna have fifteen-foot road frontage on a, in an R five.
I think you leave this as it is for now, because we told people we aren't changing the lots.
We're not changing.
And then if you leave it here and people decide they wanna change it, you can just remove the districts and leave the line.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Yes.
So Item Two A, I didn't understand that requirement.
Five, thanks. So if you have a setback, your setback, your house can't be closer than ten feet, it's, you know, but your driveway that's fifteen feet that runs fifty feet up to your lot.
Right.
You can't have a ten-foot setback to the road, but you need to have a ten-foot setback from your neighbor, that new boundary that creates that flag.
Right.
So the post is your driveway, when your flag comes out, it's saying where the lot widens at that flag part, you need to have ten feet back from that line, so you're not abutting your neighbor.
If they were rectangles, the lot, the lot line closer to the road, parallel to the road.
Right.
Is where your setback starts.
Yeah, okay.
But we don't necessarily know that that back line is gonna be parallel to the road.
But that's what she's trying.
It's basically wherever it widens, like wherever you start widening your lot, either, you know, wherever you start to make that.
You've gotta have.
You need to, you need to be ten feet back, so you're not right on the edge of the driveway.
Wouldn't it be easier to say that, you know, it's ten feet back from the dividing line between the front lot and the back lot, or something to that effect?
Or, or to.
Well, that point, actually, that, that new lot has to have setbacks.
Front yard setback requirement.
The new lot you're in at the point where the flag lot.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't even need to be there, because it's the setback of the district at that point. Which means I can't build my house fifteen, whatever it is, the side from the driveway. I can't do it from the back of the front lot, I've gotta be at least fifteen, twenty feet.
Beyond.
Yeah, beyond the end of that line before I can build.
Yeah.
So it's, it's automatically there.
It doesn't really say.
Because you have to meet the setbacks of the new lot.
Right, yeah, I mean, and the new lot, right, it's the same. It's a new lot, it has to meet all the setbacks.
Before you can build, you can't build on the line, you gotta build setback on the line.
Just because it's in back of another lot, I mean, you look at the map, there's hundreds of lots that are back of the other lots.
Right.
Which is the way the shapes.
Right.
So you still have to meet all those setbacks.
You have to still meet the setbacks.
Which is referring to those, right, so look at line five sixty-nine, page forty-three.
Yeah.
The front setback is twenty feet, the sides of those are fifteen, so.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting just all setbacks become, it's fifteen feet everywhere versus David's suggestion was that the new boundary between the two lots would have the twenty feet.
I didn't give a number.
No, I'm just saying because that's what it says. I'm just saying pointing, because that's what the front.
Right, yeah, it has to be the front, it has to be whatever the setback is for a lot.
No, but is it, yeah, but the cleanest thing would mean to just define that the new boundary between the two lots is the front boundary.
That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, okay.
I may not have said it.
Right, no, right, that's what I'm trying, right, versus, if anyone ever arguing over what they are, we just define it that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the flag lot may not look like what Renee has just drawn.
Right.
And that would make it clear to people when they're drawing their boundaries.
Yeah, and this is why.
No.
Because if you know, my front setbacks from there.
Right.
Correct, so that's why it says.
Twenty feet, that's why you need that.
Okay.
So it could go, you know, here, it'd be a nice little loop, but wherever it starts widening.
Right.
You can then start counting your twenty feet back.
Right.
So that you're not.
Right, and you're gonna have the fifteen feet from every lot regardless.
Yeah, right. In a flag lot, you have to have setback from the, the front lot. The front lot. Yeah.
You just said, you're gonna have fifteen feet from every line, but we're looking at twenty feet for front.
Right, because as written in line five seventy-one.
It's parallel to the road.
Well, or, or it's subdivided, they might subdivide on a angle or something.
It could be a by.
Are you suggesting removing the twenty feet?
No, not at all.
No.
Just designating where you're, where you're measuring from.
Designating the front becomes important when.
Right.
The front isn't the road.
Right, the front is not the road, the front is the back of the other lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're way too deep into weeds here.
I think as it widened.
Let's get back to the building height issue. On a back lot, where's the road frontage for building height, for measuring, measuring building height?
Hold that thought, hold that thought. Let's go to line twenty-seven ninety-two.
Twenty-seven what?
Ninety-two.
Twenty-seven ninety-two, okay, flag lots.
Item one, item two, item two, twenty-seven ninety-seven.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Your numbering's different from mine.
Yeah, it's a little screwy up there, but anyway. Creating a flag lot shall provide fifteen-foot of frontage and meet the minimum lot area requirements. Front, I would strike the word yard, we don't really use that in this ordinance.
Sure.
Front setback.
Yep.
Right. So begin at the point where the flag lot widens, I think if we just put that extra piece in there.
You just flag?
So begin at the point where the flag lot widens.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that accomplishes what we wanted here.
Do we wanna say review of, or B there, do we wanna say by, by the town officials or by?
No, because it could be on the state.
That's true, it could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So on, on number two, creating a flag lot split shall provide fifteen, fifteen feet of, don't we wanna say road frontage? Don't we want road there?
Because, no, because it's not measured from the road.
No, it's just for.
Road frontage.
Oh, road frontage, right, yes.
Actually, back on B, do we wanna say by the issuer of driveway permits, or something along those lines?
Mm-hmm.
I declare the review is not this board's review, it's not, it's not Rob's review.
It's the, yeah.
It's by the issuer of the driveway permit.
We're gonna have cards printed up, and they're all gonna say, see Rob.
By the permit issuer.
We're gonna hand them out, and your mind is thinking, yeah, she's already done that.
So leading all section three in the paragraph, is that correct?
So are we adding fifteen-foot of road frontage?
Just adding the word, yes, road frontage, we're adding the word road.
Okay, now can we get back to Kurt's thought?
Well, that's later, that's later on.
That's building height. Further down the road.
Yeah. Right, so I think we maybe got the flag lot more or less confirmed here now, but what about the back lot? Do we even want that section in there?
I mean, at this point, with a fifteen-feet of frontage minimum, that you can't do a back lot, so it was, it was more of if the board, when the board was talking about no minimum road frontage, just.
Right, it would then be a back lot.
It would then be a back lot.
It's no longer a back lot.
So item three.
It's a flag lot.
You can just strike.
Strike, okay.
Yeah.
That seems to simplify things considerably.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
And let's get back to where we were, EV district. Let's see, what page are we getting to?
I've got it on line five seven one.
Okay.
Twenty-three?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we wanna, do we wanna go down one more page?
Just one suggestion on A, line five eighty, that we use the same language there as we use in the table, they're both fine, but.
Which is what I just did, if you looked on the screen in the red.
Wait, no. The, the, the A, you've got two words in red there.
Yeah, okay. But the four dwelling units for the first base or quarter acre or less.
Why is it or less? Are you saying I can put four units on an eighth of an acre?
Yes.
Are you saying I can put?
Because you can meet all the setbacks.
Are you saying I can put it on a tenth of an acre?
Yes.
If you can meet the setbacks.
If you can meet.
And the parking.
And the parking and the height.
And the height. Oh, yeah, I can meet them all, if I, because I can go forty feet.
Well, if you can do it.
And I can put a driving garage.
You won't, though.
You say that.
Well, if, if someone can figure out how to do that, and it met all the setbacks, and it met the parking required, and their height, then, great.
Okay.
So what's, Jim, I notice you've become consistent in this, in this version on the screen, and are using dwelling units exclusively.
Yes.
As opposed to housing. As opposed to housing and buildings.
Right.
And I would, I'm very glad that you've done that, and suggest that at some point, you go through with find and replace, and just be, pick one, be consistent.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yeah.
Yep, you pointed that out in your comments, and I took that to heart.
I appreciate that.
Okay, shall we move on?
Yeah.
Height.
Yeah, height, parking, all these refer to the, my, the sections here in the different article. Get all the details. I had thought once about just trying to put all this in one sentence, but it just.
Nope.
Seemed to be the way to do it. Go to E V D?
Yep.
Okay, so I wrote a lengthy diatribe here. Or, the simpler, although less white space, probably just as long.
It is pretty hefty still, but tried to get it condensed.
Oddly shaped district, so you have to.
I kind of, actually, I misplaced the or there. That paragraph just below the purple should have been up there with the or. Sorry about that. But I think, so what do you, what's your plan? What are you going to do, purple or green, or something else?
I did purple.
Well, it's my.
Yeah.
Okay.
Green's too verbose.
And really, I tried to, we tried to take what Tim had drafted in the green and just kind of like condense it, so.
Yeah.
I'm okay with.
He had a huge, he gave us a huge.
In all of the greens.
I had suggested line six seventy to six seventy-three as being sufficient, which is. I know the numbering's different, which doesn't help us.
The district's creation, is that where you're starting?
Uh, let me see.
Means to nurture.
Six seventy starts, therefore the town hereby creates the infield village district. It's just that paragraph.
Oh, yeah, okay, so six seventy-six on this one, yeah.
And that way, we could eliminate both the purple and the green above it.
Yep.
And gain lots of.
Pages.
Pages.
Less.
Lose lots of pages.
Right.
Yeah, it's a. You know, you, I guess the reason I felt like we should have more verbiage is that five, seven, eight years from now, different board. Why the heck did we even create this district? It's right there.
Why do we create any district?
Right.
Well, there actually are one and three, I think, doesn't have any purposes written.
Right.
And, and I, I just feel like that lends some, some understanding to the district itself. So why did you put this together? And once that's established, and if you want to change the district, you need to change your reasoning.
Which means it constrains you.
And it should, it should. You know, this is why we put the district together originally. And if we want to change it, then we need to change our reasoning as well, as whatever verbiage or whatever requirements we want to change.
I like the purple better because I think it explains more of what we were thinking.
Also, I mean, I feel the purple just gives a justification for everything, the sections that follow.
Yeah, okay.
Type of thing, and we just. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's lacking in our town zoning is like, why is this district this way it is?
Okay.
Because another thing is that we know more of what this means. So you can read it and understand it, but I think this other, the purple explains it to someone who's saying, holy cow, I have to read all of this.
Right.
And we can try to get it down a little smaller, too, if you, you know, you could.
I think we can go with it.
I mean, ninety-nine percent of this is going to be digital, there's only going to be a few paper copies floating around to begin with, so.
It's only words.
What do you mean?
Well.
Ninety percent of the people are going to read it.
You complain about how many pages this is, but it's all digital.
Paper.
So to save on paper, printed paper copies is like, it's only probably ten in town after this is adopted.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with the purple. I really think we should have that sort of thing in there.
Okay.
I will go with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a hill we're going to die on.
Exactly.
Moving on to dimensional requirements and limitations table. I highlighted yellow for some reason.
There's no yellow on my page.
Oh, is it because of the streets?
It's dull. No, I guess it is.
Go to no, no setback requirements along, because we're in downtown, right?
Yeah, but there's only a small portion of the downtown that has, that's exempt from these requirements.
Yeah.
You still got the other, the end of Main Street up near Route Four, for instance, and along Route Four.
Right.
I wasn't sure if that had something to do with highlights.
I'd suggest that the hundred feet for prime wetlands be left in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Got that marked.
So we're saying that if the Copeland block collapsed someday.
Couldn't rebuild.
They could re, they would have to observe the ten-foot setback in the front?
No, because if you skip down to line about seven thirteen, thereabouts. Seven thirteen.
Within the central downtown area.
Well, I mean, they also grandfathered in the footprint, so.
In the footprint, but they couldn't.
So.
They could not change the footprint.
Right, right. Well, and they also got the river there, too, so.
Well, that's what I mean.
But some others say.
What I'm saying, what I was, what I'm saying is if they change the footprint, then they have to be fifty feet from the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we can't, we can't do anything about that.
We can't do anything about that, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, so anyway, I think section C under setback, item three, which is verbatim out of the old ordinance, covers the issue you raised. Yeah, those, in addition to the except as may be dictated by building codes, do we want to include the, the wetlands? Because we're not going to exempt the wetlands, are we? But we actually can't.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point. By building codes or wetlands.
Which number are you on?
I was going to three here, about seven thirteen on this draft print tonight.
Right. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so this last one, it says.
Okay.
Except as may be dictated by building codes or wetlands.
Or wetland, the wetland setback still is there.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we're really talking about the road, it's not anything else.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I see why that was. Yeah, all right, the table says fifty feet frontage, ten, ten, ten for setbacks. The narrative says, the narrative has to change, it's.
Twenty.
It should be ten.
Right.
And ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's why that was in yellow.
Yeah.
I needed you guys to confirm that's what we wanted to do, yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Moving on. The housing density limitations, that's, that's good, that's all right.
Yep.
Where are you now?
Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen.
Oh. Right, you're correct.
That was just to parking. Just on the density limitation, the setbacks, we can remove the two water bodies and wetlands, because the water bodies are a wetland.
Right.
Subback, so we just confuse ourselves and we add.
Right.
New, because that's never been mentioned before.
Right.
Well, okay, it's used pretty consistently in this, this version, but I can certainly change that. But what about setback to river, which isn't a wetland? Is that not covered by the wetland? It's not?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
It is. Yeah, that's what I thought, I think.
It is.
I think this is another case of just.
Especially as a designated river.
Yeah.
But the rivers and lakes are included as well, is my understanding.
Right.
Yeah.
Are wet, considered wet.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So our definition of wetlands in the definition section, should make that clear as well.
Right.
And then we should just.
Wetlands include all water bodies.
Right. And then we should just use as simple a terminology as we can.
Right.
All right, let me, let me look at the.
Okay, yeah.
I think the section on natural resource protection in here uses that term water bodies. Not that we can't change it, it is there.
Yep.
Okay, so parking and loading, seven thirty-six, we're okay with that.
Jim? Somewhere I saw a conflict on the height between the narrative and the table.
It's right there.
Right there.
That should be forty feet.
It should be forty.
Should be forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Three, four?
Purple.
Quick, quick comment, you know, I was taken to Kurt's comment. So I went through all the sections, and we have, you know, you have the section purpose and intent. We have a purpose for all of them except R one, R three, and CO.
Yeah.
Because there was no purpose listed in the original ordinance.
Okay, is, should there be something written in there? I can't even tell you what the purpose of.
Next year.
Yeah, there should be, but it's not a part of this, because we've said we're not going to change stuff on one, three, and five, right?
Right.
So do you want to keep purpose as part of the subsection title? So keep it. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think in the R, those two districts you mentioned, I put the word reserved.
Right.
Right.
Add it in later. Jim, could you go back to parking requirements for this set?
The last paragraph, lots within that Main Street, Blacksmith Alley are exempted from parking.
They're not.
That is, what?
They're not.
They're not, because of state law.
Well, no, because residential.
Okay.
The Davidson block is residential.
Yeah.
And we say you have to have one parking space per.
Yeah.
Per apartment.
Well, that's the use, this is just defining the geographical area.
Well, no, it says.
Well, no, it says you're.
They're exempt from parking requirements.
Right, but the area, not what gets built there. If someone did a commercial there.
They wouldn't have to have parking spaces.
Right.
Because I built a house, I do.
Yeah.
It says I don't.
Right, so were you saying, so what's wrong with?
They're suggesting adding for commercial.
For commercial only.
You could do that, and I'd be happy.
Yeah, housing, Davidson block, you have to have one per apartment, one per dwelling unit.
Well.
Dwelling unit.
Hang on, this is in the existing ordinance, this is.
I know it is.
I know, but what I'm pointing out is that the current state law requires one parking spot per dwelling.
No, no, you're minimum, maximum. Maximum, it doesn't say you have to have it, you can't require more.
You can't have more.
You can't require more, right.
But you can, for housing, I'll confirm, but I think you can say that there's no requirement for parking, and, because some towns and cities can have street parking or use the lot parking.
We don't, we don't. We say it has to be on-site, or, I think there's no way you can build an apartment building down there without providing parking on-site, because your tenants would just have nowhere to park.
But, but yes, we had that argument on the parking issue a year ago.
We had the parking issue with Davidson.
Well, and with the Copeland block, he had to provide.
Right, and the Copeland block.
One per.
One per apartment, right.
Well, well, we actually, I remember the conversation was, you require one per dwelling unit, and I can meet that.
Right.
But he didn't have to. On the other hand, if he didn't, where the hell has his tenant got to park? So there's, I just think it's natural, it's just going to take care of itself.
Of course, if there were a new apartment building, they could build right up to the.
Just built one.
Well.
He's got six apartments, and he's got, what about?
His original one with the underneath, what I was going at is something that fills the space next to Copeland block. I remember when.
Right.
The buildings all came to the sidewalk, so that could be done again. But they would need to have parking underneath the building.
Right, but this, what's in the current ordinance is what you have here in the.
Right.
And it doesn't define residential versus commercial.
Right, I know.
It just says geographical area.
Okay.
Do we want to leave that or not? That's really the question. Not whether it's what gets, not what gets built, just a geographical area. Do you want to say in that spot of town, you don't require parking for anything?
Which is what we have been doing for the last ten years.
Yeah, okay.
And it's.
So we didn't enforce it. In the case of the Davidson, we told them they had to have.
One per unit.
Parking space per unit.
And I thought that.
And we.
That was because there was a carve-out for residential in our regs, isn't it?
Maybe in the, was it the site plan?
Site plan.
Was it multifamily?
Yeah.
It's multifamily.
So the site plan, maybe in there, you could, you required it?
I don't remember where it is.
We can leave it.
I'm pretty sure it was there.
We can leave it like this. What the hell? It's up to them, because in theory, if I've got more than X number of apartments, it's considered commercial. Not considered residential, it's considered commercial.
Well, for purposes of insurance and mortgages, but not zoning. We don't, we don't make that designation in the zoning.
Yeah, I take Tim's point there.
Yeah.
I am not going to die on this hill.
Another one, right, exactly. Because you're right, it's going to be up to the landowner to give, put the parking spaces there. It's not like anybody's going to take advanced transit.
Yeah.
Right.
You could, you could have an apartment for which you don't have any parking, and you can only rent it to someone who doesn't have a car.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what basically, we're both saying the same thing.
The argument was, at the time, when we're dealing with parking in general.
Right.
A year or two ago, was, it's up to the. A year or two ago was, it's up to the developer, the developer to decide.
Right.
What he wants to do.
Right.
Let them decide how many and where.
Right.
So.
We'll let them do it. Okay, because we're only on page thirty-one.
Let's move on. Uh, now we're in the easy one, Route Four District. This is not easy at all. Um, so, purpose, I think we're ahead. Green or purple?
I went purple.
Yep.
Just two votes, three votes. See if it abbreviated.
Yeah, I'll go with purple.
Purple.
That's, that's, that's fine.
I don't have purple, but I'll go with it, because consistently it's been better.
I'll go with purple.
I've got my, all my notes are.
It's verbose, but I'll go with it anyway.
Okay.
We can go on to, and we can.
Summary table. Eight thirty-six. Rob?
I'm sorry.
Fifteen feet.
Eight thirty-six.
There it is.
There you go.
You were out of the room, my peripheral vision saw the pages flipping.
I was a ghost.
Yeah.
The only reason I had that in red was just part of that flag lot discussion, so I think we've resolved that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. We're all, we're all right with everything there?
So one thing I'll just add comment, I think, and maybe this came out of conversation after, but the, um, the minimum lot size, at least for the frontage on Route Four, I think we recommended keeping it at fifteen thousand square feet, just because of the Route Four and the curb cuts and such.
Right.
Um, but that's obviously up to the board to.
Well, that's about a third of an acre.
Yeah.
And it's a pretty small lot, I don't know why we wouldn't. You, you couldn't get much smaller than that.
Mm-hmm.
And meet the road frontage.
True, a hundred feet.
Feels like it's going to take care of this.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Just for my edification, Tim, why do you have a maximum of eighty feet on that front side?
Someone explaining that.
Yeah, so that was from, um, more along lines of commercial, um, so that you can't have a huge commercial setback really far and a bunch of parking.
Oh, okay.
Right, you don't have, you don't have a Walmart.
Oh, right.
Or if you do, the parking's in the back.
The parking's in the back.
Parking's in the back, yeah.
Got it.
So, kind of keep that.
When I say a Walmart, I mean a Walmart design.
Yeah.
Not a Walmart.
No.
Scroll forwards.
Scroll forward.
And that's current, existing today, um, that's carryover.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's in there today. And most folks were.
Shall, highlight the shall.
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 Shall, definitely. Well, okay, here's why I put that question there.
State law.
Well, the, the town ordinance has got, um, there's a distance limitation to the sewer main, so once you're past.
Right.
You don't have to connect. I'm thinking, Rob, of the lot that, the big lot behind, uh.
Yeah.
Shaker Valley.
Yeah.
You know, conceivably you could, could put up some houses back there with septic systems.
That's right. I think the state law's three fifty.
Three fifty.
I don't know what state law is.
Yeah, it's, it's three fifty.
Of gravity.
Yeah, so that's why I figured the word may meant that, okay, the town sewer regulations may require you to hook on, but we're not necessarily going to require it here. I mean, we could get more explicit about that, but, anyway, then I wasn't sure we could enforce the shall. I think that's the issue. Uh, yeah, well, any, any, any lot down, let's say, uh, Lovejoy Brook or McConnell, for instance. Well, McConnell's got a sewer, but Hardy Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the poor example. Where the SAU office is, if someone added another building back there.
Yeah.
So what should we do?
Yeah, we can.
Shall.
Just force it without us being able to back it up?
Why don't we say shall and when legal we use it, let them tell us that we can't?
Or put on less exception.
I mean, it says, as stipulated by the town sewer connection regulation, so that's, so you're referencing to the sewer regulation, so if that number changes at some point, then we're covered too. So, I mean, that's sort of a default.
That's right, so you can, actually you can leave the may there. Because it's stipulated.
May be required.
You may be required, based, based on the select board say, you got to connect.
Yeah.
Yeah, so may works.
I have a question about four in the purple. So I've got a lot that is a corner lot, fronts on Route Four and also fronts on the side street. Does that work?
I think it depends where their point of entrance is to the lot.
Say I've got both, which we do, we have a couple in that both.
That's true.
Why, why, what do you do with your driveway cut? You can have two, a side street and Route Four?
Yeah, so example would be in the, uh, the commercial. Dealer down, used to be a warehouse, right on Lovejoy.
Yeah, yeah.
Six oh three auto.
Yeah, but.
Which is now six oh three auto, they have both.
Right, but does he have two permit, permitted driveway cuts?
Yes, he does.
Might be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has to.
The laws where it was pre-zoning.
Yeah.
Everything else, so, yeah, but.
Well, McConnell.
Give, but why wouldn't they have?
Right.
For traffic.
These are going to get two, two driveway permits.
Yeah.
Right. And it helps with traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
McConnell Road has two of those lots, and one's Far Harbor Bank.
Right.
And the other's the lot that Bill Warren has for sale.
Yeah.
Little house that was his real estate office.
Right, he's got one on both.
Shall, shall.
You ready?
Yeah.
What?
I'm just reading.
Reading the.
Route Four side street.
I think it's.
What's the whole purpose of the line?
So the whole point of the line is to, if you go back up to the table on the frontage requirements on side streets and how your lot is set up.
Can we just simplify it as they, as those that do not abut Route Four?
Or access.
For getting access, is if you don't.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
If you, if you abut Route Four, you're a Route Four lot.
You're a Route Four lot.
So a side, side street lot is one that does not abut.
But, Route Four. Yeah. Yeah.
Do not abut.
Does any of those within, it was, that was, came from the conversation of any of the side street lots, right, within Route Four, giving them more flexibility and matching their criteria to Enfield Village.
Yeah.
So, but it wouldn't make, it wouldn't look right if it's right on Route Four.
Right. And then also, like, if somebody wanted to put in a private road and subdivide, it makes it clear that whatever is abutting Route Four is in a abutting Route Four lot. Regardless of whether they access it from their new private road.
Mm-hmm.
That's true, that's a good point.
Okay, move down to road frontage. For some reason, why did I cross that out?
Was it just carryover from the other districts, because they were so little? Just the fifteen foot?
Um, just why, probably have one hundred feet or more, it's just, the minimum is just one hundred, there's no one more.
Right.
It's one hundred feet period, do we need what I crossed out or not? I can't remember why I crossed it.
I guess if they needed, for some reason, for site distance, more than a hundred feet, but, uh.
That's a state permit.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you say as regulated by DOT?
Yep.
Well, we need that in the last, the last part.
In the per, yeah, and you get rid of all the others.
As permitted.
It saves the whole word.
Yeah.
I'm not adding many, so that's, that's good. So we're, we're good with that? Scroll down, Rob, forward. I think I just highlighted that in yellow, just to make sure it corresponded to the table, and it does.
My line eight forty, which is the section on lots with frontage and driveway access on side streets.
Yep.
Paragraph says, the minimum width for frontages on town roadways shall be determined by minimum width required for a driveway permit issued by either the town or the state. If we're talking about town roadways, the state would not have jurisdiction, I don't think. That is very true.
Where, where are you? What line?
Eight seventy.
Eight seventy or seventy-one, seventy-two.
I thought you said eight forty.
It is on his.
It is on mine.
Oh, well, that's not fair.
Because he's on that.
I'm, I'm reading off my computer where I did all of my marginal notes.
Right.
Okay.
Which is putting me at a great disadvantage compared to the rest of you.
Yeah.
Because you have a, a more updated version, I think.
Yeah.
Linda, another example of an entrance on Route Four and on a side street would be our public safety building.
Yes. That's, that's, is that even a street?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
That is.
No.
Granite way, whatever it is.
Granite way, yeah.
Yeah, that's a street. I don't know if it's a public street or a private street, but it's.
Private.
It's pri, it's a street.
Yeah.
And all the fire trucks enter the building that way, so they don't have to back in.
Uh, okay, um, so fixing the town or the state, taking that state part, does that, does that make that?
That makes it, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go over to, scroll forward to, um, nine fifteen.
Yeah.
So, um, we would otherwise refer to the parking and loading sections of Article Four, but Renee suggested we have this section carry forward from the old ordinance.
I think the two rows max was discussed at the last couple opening board discussions, um, and so that was, uh.
But that's, that gives you the eighty feet.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the eighty feet takes care of that.
Right, it matches, um, and I think the, the thought here too is just kind of like going back to like the, the time to really kind of look in and hone it on, in on some of these other characteristics that, the parking, the pedestrian access, um, vegetative buffer slash, um, like landscaping. Yeah, okay, so.
We're on parking.
Parking, I mean, I think mostly just because the board just kind of, as I talked about before, kind of ran out of time to really dive into it further and to look at it, and I don't think that there's anything super restrictive, um, within the current state. Um, and so, leaving it if.
Yeah.
Makes sense, because it matches and it explains still as to why the two rows max and eighty, and, and the two rows max, like, that's important too, you can't have, I mean.
Well.
You can't fit with an eighty-foot maximum setback anyways, but more than that, but maybe.
Actually, I can.
You can, yeah. You might be able to.
Well, no, I can, because you're, you're saying I've got to go this way, if I go this way.
Right.
I'll have more than two rows.
But they're not going to do that, that's, that's two, three lines of parallel parking.
Well.
Turning customers off, would you?
I tried parallel parking recently in Hanover, I didn't succeed, please don't do that, I'm just kidding.
Anyway, but this is, this table has references A, B and C, and there's no, there's nothing.
Those might just need to be removed, I don't think.
And also.
I think because it came from the form base.
And the very last line, two, no parking will occur within the front planting area, planting areas aren't defined here anymore.
Well, they are in landscaping.
In this.
Mm-hmm.
Any one of this?
Yeah, we kept landscaping, so we didn't get to that yet, but yes.
Okay.
So.
Shared parking or access located on or across side or rear lot lines may be approved. What does that mean? Oh, um, shared parking between, say, two commercial buildings.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That way you can have interconnection of properties without having a curb cut.
Right, right, you eliminate the twelve-way issue.
Right.
Basically, you, shared, basically shared lots.
Right.
With the current building, but like, taken.
So what does this mean, setback from property line one, zero or ten feet minimum?
Um, so, the parking has a minimum of zero, ten feet from the property line.
Yeah.
It can't be, I can't remember what it says. I mean, if you want to keep the diagram, I suppose we could probably put that, I guess, I thought that was carried over in it, but maybe not. Yeah, this, this, um, picture, A, B, C, D, maybe this, I thought this was included in there, but you might just need to include this picture.
Well, it's probably so that you can have a shared parking lot.
Right.
So like the parking lot setback is zero, because you're sharing the lots.
Right.
Type of thing.
There's just.
You're not sharing the lot and you have ten feet setback.
Right.
Well, this, this came in at the last minute and I didn't have time to study it, digest it, um.
I mean, I think that, in the notes, the one, two, three are the notes there that reference the picture.
There's nothing there that hurts anything.
Yeah, I, again, I think it was our review that we were just kind of like, it doesn't change a whole lot.
Right.
It, you know, I think at the, our parameter to some of this, of our recommendation to keep some of this in, is that if it were to be removed, it's ten times harder to put it back in. If you want to go and look at it later and say, okay, we really want to clean up parking.
Right.
This doesn't make sense, it's easy enough to adjust it, um, if you find something in the future that you like from another one, but, um, I think at least having something in some parameters was our recommendation.
Well, can you, can you guys, like, first thing in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Revise this, include the pictures.
The picture.
Make sure the references are referring to something and.
Yep, yep, I think that, yeah, I'll make sure that picture, I believe it's in there, but I will double check that.
I mean, I really need that immediately.
Yep.
If we're going to leave it in, then.
Right, it's just adding this. Right, it's just adding this one, cause the notes are just one, two, and three that reference.
Okay.
Explaining what it is. No bargaining shall occur within the front planting area, which is C on the picture. So it's just the picture in being inserted and all of that will make sense.
So scrolling forward to nine thirty-six. Section on signs. The only thing that's new here is Renee suggested we put this little table in for sign setbacks.
Well, the sign setbacks was existing, yeah. Yeah, so the existing, all in that blue, um, sign setbacks. Again, just something that we haven't really had time to dive into signage for your commercial and economic development.
First thing I'd like to have further back than two feet. Cause I'm tired of coming out of Masco and the bank and not being able to see because their sign is about eighteen inches back from the road.
Yeah.
That's a good point, so you could make that, that greater.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's a lot of places like that where it's like, what were they doing?
Sight.
Yeah.
Visibility.
Yeah.
Sight line, yeah, sight, visibility for driving, not for design, but for driving safety.
Coming out of the driveway, no, it's not just there, there's other places I've been in parking lots where I'm sort of creeping out and hoping I'm not gonna get it.
The front of the car has to be in the road in order to see past the sign.
Yeah.
That's what he suggested. Five? Five feet?
Whatever, I don't know what's, something else.
Yeah. Right.
Think along Route four, you'll find that DOT won't let you put a sign in there right away. That's gonna put you back quite a ways.
Right.
The right away route four varies depending on where you are too, so.
On what side of the road it comes from, it's not in the center in most places.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So leave the table at least to five feet.
Yeah.
Scrolling forward to nine seventy-one.
Yeah, get rid of it.
Well, scroll one more bit. That got split between two pages. Keep going, Rob. Right there, that's the second part. So the blue, the blue was the existing ordinance. And I was looking at that and saying, well, wait a minute here. Vegetated buffer at least twenty-five feet deep. Well, if you're near a residential lot, you've got a lot that's a hundred feet of road frontage. I mean, you, your vegetated screen is gonna be really eaten into your, your lot, and I, I just wondered if we couldn't simplify and just say a tree screen's gotta be installed and not really specify that. Although David, I think you raised the question, how big and how deep?
I believe I did raise that. And if we don't specify it, we could get either minimal screening.
Or roll a tree.
Or we could get, you know, totally dense, unseeable through. So I think we ought to come up with some sort of guidance.
Well, twenty-five feet deep seems excessive to me.
I agree.
Fifteen?
Maybe fifteen.
That could probably get you three rows.
I'm thinking whatever the setback is. What is the setback?
So your current landscaping mentions ten feet. The planting area at least ten feet deep shall be established on all front lines.
It's, uh, it's twenty feet, side rear setbacks. So a commercial property could have their parking lot go in that setback, right? Driveway, parking lot, few other little things, but that's mainly, so.
Well, the way we.
Not if you have to have a buffer.
The way we currently define things, a driveway is permissible in the setback, but a parking lot is not. Look it up.
It's from the structure setback.
The structure definition.
Right.
What do you think, Eric?
We might want to change that.
Eric, you had to deal with this.
Oh, I definitely don't agree with that definition, but.
But I'm, I'm just saying what's.
That's, that's a distraction from what we're trying to do right now.
Okay, yeah.
It's related, but yeah, it's a distraction.
It's a distraction, I agree. And it's a, well, and by that way, you can't have a shared parking lot then. If the parking lot, it does not, if the parking lot.
Well, that's where the thing said zero.
Right.
For the EV four district.
But it doesn't say it for, it's, you still have to have a setback.
For a building.
For a building.
For a building, yeah, structure.
The parking lot is a structure.
Therefore, it needs a setback.
Therefore, it's in the, it's the setback.
Well, except you, location of parking, in the parking reg, it has setback from property line, zero or ten feet. So you do give relief in the Route four under the parking section, the parking today.
Except that you say the parking lot is a structure and you can't have a structure in the setback.
I, see, I, I agree with Eric, I don't.
I, it's someplace, it's down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
And what Renee is pointing out is there's yet another conflict.
Right, I know.
There's a relief given under.
There's a relief.
Right.
Location parking in Route four currently, and what, and what we recommend to keep for now.
And that's right.
Until it gets to that.
Yeah, okay.
So back to the tree screen, how about ten feet?
I can do ten.
Sure. Okay.
Nobody's followed it yet. I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, no, so, so that's my fundamental question, but.
Yeah.
What, it, these are not things that are being enforced.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a commercial.
To me, it's just a burden to.
Yeah.
That it doesn't have any impact.
Yeah.
Well, the, the only thing I, here I could see is if you, if you had an apartment building or even a single-family home, I'm thinking right next to Shaker Valley, yeah, there's homes on both sides.
Yeah.
Having a tree screen between the commercial and the residential. Yeah, I can see where that's a.
Yeah.
But we have those situations now and there are tree screens. In fact, like one of the people who came and made a public comment on the transition of adding Ziggy's in and putting the patio out back.
Right.
Was that they could see it and hear it from their residential lot that board it.
Right.
And there's no tree screen there.
Yeah.
Well, it is, what they currently require is a vegetated buffer.
A turn sign.
We're rested with a stock defense.
Right.
That could be low bush blueberries. Yeah, I, I guess I just, you know, I'm not sure we're accomplishing anything, but I'm not gonna worry about it type.
Another hill we're not gonna die on.
Do we go back to something?
Sure.
Page thirty-five. Line nine thirteen, is, is the maximum building height in the downtown area supposed to be fifty?
It doesn't.
We're in Route four.
This is Route four.
I don't.
This isn't downtown.
She's going back to downtown.
Back to nine thirteen.
Uh, that is, page thirty-five is the Route four district, which starts on page thirty.
Right, this is the Route four district.
And we're allowing fifty feet in the Route four district.
Route four district.
I didn't remember that.
I had forty feet too.
So line nine eighty-two. Building form. And pedestrian access and landscaping. So the building form is exactly what we've been trying to knock to.
So the only thing we kept was building height infotprint. Everything else is removed.
Well, yeah, except.
No, it says, "Design of parapets should be reviewed by the local park."
Right, so some of that can be, that was, I guess, more discussion for the board.
Yeah. Says they have to pitch routes. It's definitely more than both of them.
Yeah, except line nine thirteen, which she just brought up, says it's fifty feet max, not forty foot max that's in the table.
Well, that's what was bothering me.
Right.
So we, I had forty feet, so I don't know where, well, yeah, we had forty feet in our.
I think it should be forty.
Okay, so we need to change back to nine thirteen, thank you, change it to forty.
Um, and yeah, so if the notes, if you want to remove that, um, that's all fine. I know there was just a lot of discussion, again, that we didn't get, have time to get into, onto the pitch routes and all of that and community.
That's exactly what people have commented, said, I don't want, developers have commented, we're not interested in these, these kinds of things.
So that can just be struck.
I mean, we even talked about destroying all of that last year, we didn't do it because of noticing and, and stuff, right?
Right.
We also need to go back to the table and change that to forty feet.
I fixed it, the other two stuffs.
I got it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I just, these sections for the next couple of pages, I, I just, we don't have time to debate it.
Right.
I think, right, I think our recommendation was just to leave it in, cause it, again, removing it, um, in our experience is a lot harder to get anything put back in later.
The section on pedestrian sidewalks shall be provided along Route four, well, no.
Well, and like that, and if that's, but it's not being done today.
Right.
You're not requiring it today, or you're giving variances to it. But I think that internal.
No one's built anything because of it.
That's why.
Because of it?
Yeah, I mean.
No, not because of it, the cumulative.
Right.
Burden of all.
But I think the walkability factor.
I know, Renee.
Would be great.
We all know that, but it's not gonna happen.
True, so if you, I mean, I think, I, okay, I think if that was something that's holding it up, I think the internal access, pedestrian access is important.
Well, we got that.
But.
It's on the parking side.
No, 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 this, this crosswalks.
It's not, yeah.
Lots of budding, the rail trail is important to, is our recommendation to keep in there, um, and access between, pedestrian safety within parking areas. So I think again, just like, there has to be, which may be under site plan too.
Well, why don't we just put in the words maybe required for now, and that. Yeah, but under what circumstances would they be required? That's the question, if we say may. Well, it just, I just, this, this whole thing needs, if we're gonna do something like this, it'd probably require a whole month's worth of study and argument and back and forth and.
Right.
And as it is now.
Let's.
Crosswalks provided where pedestrians are directed to cross vehicles or travel, well, we're not doing that, no one's doing that.
Right.
Well, like when I cross Duncan, if I'm leaving Duncan, I'm going to the other side of the parking lot.
Yeah, walking.
But I'm walking my car on the other side of the parking lot, but would that be in site plan anyways, pedestrian access within the lot?
Yeah.
Cause there's no crosswalk currently.
No.
There's probably no reason to put a crosswalk there.
Right.
Most strip malls don't have crosswalks.
Right, unless they're larger size.
This landscaping, tree sizes and calipers and so forth, I, I just.
We leave it, don't play with it.
I think we should take it out.
Or take it all out, either way. I mean.
We could take it out and put it back in when we do site plan.
All that's in there now.
Put it into site plan.
Okay. So get rid of the entire pedestrian access?
I, I think so, cause we just.
Yeah.
The infrastructure's not there, if you put a sidewalk in, where's it gonna go?
Right.
You know, maybe the TIF district could install some sidewalks and then, all right, now, now we could reconsider for.
Right.
New, uh.
Yeah, and then it, it, it follows the sign ordinances. Doesn't have to have its own special one.
Building form, landscaping, pedestrian access, I'll just take all of that out.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. See, we just got rid of two pages.
That's gotta be like four kilobytes.
I know.
This might answer your earlier question of, um, the depth between like a non-residential and a residential use.
Get punchy this early in the evening.
Like that screening that you're talking about. On line ten twelve, it has twenty-five feet deep currently.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the one piece I, I thought we should.
Yeah, yeah, carry forward.
Simple.
Yeah.
We'll leave that in, but.
Were you striking the landscaping?
Well, the board needs to decide to do that or not, do we, who votes yes? I vote yes.
The landscaping, guys, that's in here?
Take it out.
Yeah, I'd kill it. Two-inch caliper or eight-foot high minimum. One-inch caliper or five-foot high minimum. Shrubs of a one-gallon size minimum.
We can put that back in in site plan once we think it through.
Right.
If we decide we need it.
So, Tim, what you're suggesting is to only keep line ten twelve, the landscaping buffers from residential development.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That's fair.
And you was gonna change it to ten feet. To ten feet. Yes. Get rid of everything else, all the other blue.
Okay, special aquifer protection measure in line ten eighteen.
You gotta keep that.
So, yeah, that, bit in purple. I, I get the, um, the intent there, but no lot shall have more than seventy percent impervious surface, that pretty much is the entire lot minus setbacks, um, in most cases.
Right.
If, if we were gonna, I guess what I'm saying is if we're gonna do this, we probably want to be more aggressive with that number to be, to, to really accomplish anything.
Why do we have that under special aquifer protection?
And that is existing today.
Yeah.
I will say.
Under special aquifer protection?
No, but under your current zoning regs today, it does have a seventy percent, um, that line of impervious surface.
Okay, so that could have been in blue.
It could have been blue, it is green, it's just more of where you, where you locate it, which makes sense, because it is a measure to help protect stormwater and.
The reason for that, Linda, is the, the town water supplies from Lovejoy Brook and then the hole down in the wetland. That aquifer is under all of the prime real estate of Route four. And there's actually, that section deserves a lengthy, several pieces to it. There's a bunch of uses that state law just flat-out prohibits. You know, aquifer protection, junkyard, a bulk petroleum storage facility, that kind of thing. And I, I started to put that stuff in some months ago, but then realized that we don't have time to think about all that. And it is in state law, so it's not like it could be done anyway, but there may, you know, we might want to be more aggressive with this impervious thing, but not now. So, these two things could stay here and.
What, what if you just said under special aquifer protection measures per state regulations? So that people know that there are some guardrails, but they're put in by the state, and they'll have to look to the state regs for where those guardrails are.
Yeah, I, I could do that, I could draft a sentence to accomplish that, I did.
Yeah.
As, as you're thinking about it, what we really wanted here was make sure that the water penetrates the ground and doesn't flow off. So if there are way, and somebody doing a full engineering, site plan's going to have that information, if there was a way to write in that they won't change the infiltration to the ground, that's really what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, yeah.
And then-
And it's complicated.
It is, it is, but there's probably a simple way to, we can probably think of a simple way to say, water still has to flow into the ground, not off the property. And then whatever you, however they figure out to engineer that, whether it's through minimizing that, you know.
Is this seventy percent line in our current regs?
Yeah.
It's, um, under lot requirements, impervious seventy percent max.
Why don't we just leave it for now and deal with it when we deal with it?
Move on.
Okay, so leave A and B, uh, what about Dave's suggestion of another sentence that talks about? No, let's look by default, so, you know, we're gonna spend time trying to come up with wording in the next twenty-four hours.
Or put in parentheses per state of New Hampshire regulations.
Yep. That's my dilemma. Can we just leave it? Okay, rule one, uh, ten twenty-six. All right, a couple of you made comments about the dimensional requirements on lot size, for instance. Yes, this mainly refers to, um, dwelling density, but I didn't wanna screw around with the language here. I just, it, it doesn't really jive with the format of the other three dist, the new districts, but when we deal with this, we can fix all of that. That's why I didn't even try.
Okay.
And you only allow one principal dwelling anyways there, so it's really one lot, one, one dwelling unit per lot?
Yeah, yeah.
So your lot is, like, people?
Now, um, I could refer you to line ten sixty-six, building and structure height limitations, here's a choice to make. You see here that, um, uh, it says, building and structure heights, so it's just conform to Article Four, Section four oh one, except in this district, maximum height is thirty-five feet. And-
Yep.
There you go, and so I did that in all of the other districts, all the rural districts, C, I, C O. And, and here was my reasoning, um, I think we're eventually gonna set a townwide height limitation of forty feet, which then accommodates all those two-and-a-half-story buildings that are all over town that are taller than thirty-five feet, um, even in the rural districts. But we don't wanna do it now.
Right.
And so, when you go to Article Four, or Article Six, Section two to four, or Article, sorry, uh, Article Four, Section four oh one, it does indeed say forty feet, but the exception is listed here under these districts. That way, when we do change these, we don't have to change the, the townwide issue. It could be done the other way around.
Okay.
But again, I'm just trying to figure out, how could we amend this the simplest in the future? Or it could just stay at thirty-five feet, if that's what we wanted.
I think it's just simpler to say maximum building height is thirty-five feet-
Right.
And forget that first sentence.
'Cause anything that, the two-and-a-hafts are all grandfathered.
Well, I know, but eventually we wanna have these, these rural districts bring buildings into conformity, right?
Right, so, new buildings?
I mean, it's just the new buildings that have to be conformed, be in conformity, not the old ones. 'Cause they're gonna, there's barns that are forty feet.
Tim's trying to figure out the easiest way to propose future changes, and what he's saying is the easiest way to do it would be to put the exceptions here, which you can then choose to delete, or add to, or modify, but have a townwide statement in Section, Article Four.
Article Four, Section Four.
Yeah, it's just that's, it's like the, right, you have a default speed limit, except where otherwise noted. So it's a structural question, what's easier to modify and make sure you're consistent in the future, and avoid those future inconsistencies.
Trust me, please. No. Can we, can we move on, or you, you hung up on that?
So you're gonna keep it the same right now?
Yeah, but I wouldn't-
And then we'll work on it later.
Don't change it, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think there was anything else in R one that was an issue. R three, uh, going to eleven forty-two. Yeah, okay. I got hung up on some, this, this was a problem with the land use table, and some of the special exceptions that were listed in the old ordinance for this district. And I had one of them in here in the version you have in your printed hand, which is the roof and the community man, that mirrored solar arrays, but I didn't have the estates item. So I put them in there, it's on the screen.
Yep.
We didn't wanna have estates show up in the land use table, because it wasn't a use that we wanted to, uh, continue with, however, it's in the old ordinance in R three, five, R three and five, I think. So there's how you, you know, it's just, it's there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, scroll on. Uh, yep, keep going. And you see there the same thing, max building height, thirty-five feet. And then the boundary, I think we can go on to R five.
Yeah.
Scroll forward just a wee bit, uh, now this one had one additional special exception, aircraft land use strips. Yeah, so putting it here allows us to take it completely out of the land use table for another day.
I'm on board.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
All right.
Um, what are you saying, we were saying about that, because- Okay, look up here on the screen. All right. We're in R five. Yeah. Those three special exceptions do not appear in the land use table. They're really peculiar to this district from the old ordinance. And since we don't wanna change the old ordinance in this district, they're here.
Right.
Okay.
Cert is an airstrip by right or by special exception under state?
It's by right.
By right.
Unless, and the way it's worded is, unless the town prohibits it, basically says, unless the town says no, it's permitted in all districts.
So we're sort of in the middle by saying special exception?
Yeah, yeah. Right, you can have it in this district.
You're permitting it, you get a special exception.
Right, as opposed to saying, no, or saying, if you leave it blank, it's by right.
Right.
State law says by right.
Right.
If you say special exception or no, then you-
Then it's-
And it's, that's what it is.
So do we then have to say no for village district, or R one?
Any district, any district.
Have we said that?
In the current, it is.
In the current.
Um, we- The problem is the, the old ordinance, the new, this says aircraft land use, what the hell does that mean? And you have to define it, it's not defined in the old ordinance.
No, but it's in state records.
Right.
It's not really defined in the RSAs either, um, they talk about-
Helicopter, helicopter pad is a-
Yeah, this goes in- Anyplace, any aircraft that lands-
Right.
And that's bought, that's what it is.
Right.
And that's how the, basically, the RSAs word it. I would suggest that we're not gonna get, nobody's gonna wanna put an aircraft facility into E V D and four. It's, it's not a facility, it's the, and it's the stuff I sent you.
It's the land.
It was, there is this stuff where a single person, a homeowner, can buy a micro, there's a name for it, I might forget.
Little helicopter.
Little helicopters, a one-seater.
Right.
And it looks like a go-kart with a, with a rappel.
Right, I could take off from my backyard.
Yeah, yeah, and it, they're the noisiest, I've seen one when I was traveling.
I know.
My lord, are they noisy.
Right.
You think, blow, um, leaf blow is a bad-
Right.
Times a hundred, literally, this thing is just screams.
Yeah.
High pitch. Let's get through this quick. Yeah, yeah, so- It's not come up in the last, what, twenty-five, thirty years? It just- Let's deal with it next year. I'm just saying, just stay, permitted or not permitted, you have to, um, either you allow them or you don't, or especially- When we get to the land use table, let's bring that back up.
Right.
Okay. Commercial industrial district, thirteen thirty-nine. And this one had, um, scroll down a little bit further. Oh, we can do aircraft land strips in the CI as well, I need to change that to A B instead of V C, but, yes. Same, same discussion. And I, maybe you all knew this, but there's no structure height limitations in the CI district.
Right.
I didn't know that.
You know, somebody wants to put in a big silo or something or other.
They need their tower for their airstrip. They need the tower for their airstrip.
That's right.
Air traffic control. Scroll back just a little bit, too. There's no, there are no front setbacks.
Right.
There's no road frontage requirement.
No.
Just minimum lot size. You knew all that, Rob.
Well, it's, if you look at it, it's-
Yeah, it's a way to-
It's a tractor, it's a tractor.
Geographically, it's a strange district, so anyways, but that's for next year, if you wanna do something, stuff there. Yep, all right, scroll forward. Think maybe that fixes that.
Where's the CI district?
Where Willbach is.
I eighty-nine.
I eighty-nine.
I eighty-nine.
Act of sixteen?
The Humvee, the, the Humvee Society, Evan's, is where most of the commercial is.
But it's also Evans and-
Right, P Evans.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
My box. Yeah.
So this CI district had in the special- Well, that's- Yeah, but we're not gonna do anything, are we, move on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're not making changes.
Okay, right. Moving on to C O fourteen ninety-five. I'm doing the same thing, we're not s-
Yeah.
We're not gonna make changes, that's just, yeah, move on. I had to add estates there, um, I don't think it showed up here. Okay, oh, um, David, you pointed this out, if you look up there, everything after estates, all that verbiage applied to a long list of stuff in the special exception section, and I wasn't, and I mistook it to mean only applying to the C O, I just took it right out, um, 'cause it's, um, it's all covered in the Z V A sections anyway. Dimensional requirements, I think we're good there, scroll forward, Rob.
Yeah.
Hold on, that one thing on the dimensional requirements, I think we just put in there to clarify that it's a ten-acre minimum lot size, that's always been my understanding. And the way it's worded, it doesn't specifically say that, 'cause you have, the way it has reserved, but then you read the next line, one of the lines down, um, where is it?
One line?
Somewhere it says, it does actually say something about ten acres in the- Yeah, it does, and that's, um, I think in the special requirements part, scroll forward, Rob. Well, keep going.
Keep going, keep going.
It does say ten acres somewhere, and it's always been my understanding of how the board treated that zone. Oh, I know where it is. Go back, and I think it's in the housing density part.
For conservation district?
Yeah, housing limitation. There it is. Ten acres. So-
Of land.
What I took that to mean is, you could have a, you could create a seven-acre lot in the C O district, you just can't put a house on it unless it's ten acre.
Right.
But the C O, I thought was only residential somewhere. Well, you could use it for farm or agricultural purposes.
It says you can construct buildings for non-dwelling purposes.
Right.
Right, but that's adjacent to a, to, anyways, the C O pre-exist, that just, the wording for this district actually predates zoning regulations adoption.
Right.
It was a special, like Orford had, there was this special thing that was created, and then the town created zoning. So, and that's why that's word, and this wording got carried through all these years. And that's why it's so weird compared to where we, all the other wording. And I think just clarify that lot size there is ten acres.
Can we just say, non-dwellings and lot size shall be limited to a density? No, not one, you know, it's just ten acres.
Yeah, because it's, 'cause some of the other uses don't necessarily require ten acres as currently, but-
Right.
Agricultural uses and forestry uses don't actually require ten acres.
It's only residential.
Cluster development is allowed, is permitted. Cluster development is allowed, is permitted.
Yeah.
Non-commercial recreational activities don't necessarily require...
Right. You could put a ski area there.
Well, yeah, maybe after private, it's non-commercial, it says.
Right. But if you...
But if you won't put a house up, you're gonna have to, you gotta have 10 acres.
That's what it says now, so that's what we should keep.
Yeah. We can clean it up in the next...
I tend to agree with you. But we said we're not making changes, so let's not make it.
Yeah, right.
I was trying to think of, to your point, like where, I'd seen it elsewhere, was the Meskoma watershed plan that I had presented in one of the other presentations as well, with information on the surrounding towns and their acre requirements, and it did list out, you know, lot size requirements for each of the districts, and that CO listed 10 acres. So people, when they look at it, interpret it, they interpret it as 10 acres.
Yeah, that's how I've always understood it.
Yep.
Um, there hasn't been a lot of development up there.
Well, if they, if someone pressed the issue, it wouldn't have stood up.
Yeah, well, just flag it for next year then.
Yeah, okay. Let's go to general provisions, I think. Oh, wait a minute, David, you had a section on the, question on the overlay districts.
We don't have any.
We do.
Yeah.
Where?
Enfield Center.
Enfield Center.
Center, Enfield Center.
Yeah, that's a historical district.
Right.
But it's...
It's an overlay.
I guess we call it an overlay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there is an overlay.
It's a four-building overlay.
On the Route 1 district, it's...
Four, right, four buildings. Is it three or four?
Three.
It's only three.
Right here.
Golden triangle.
Yeah.
We should keep it as is.
Right.
Yep.
Alright, so to general provisions, we're getting, we're making progress.
1683. Yeah, alright, um, so I talked about the height thing, and I think we agreed we'd leave this alone.
Yes.
Alright, um, so measurement of maximum height, well, now here's something to chew on. I'm gonna shut up, you guys just make up your minds and pick one.
Leave it alone, the blue.
Yeah.
And we sure have heard all of the permutations argued.
Yeah, Robert, has this been an issue for you?
Not, not too bad, I mean, it's come up a few times, but it's not a, it's not a stumbling block, sure.
So we leave it blue?
Yeah.
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 Okay. 'Cause I'm gonna move the road to where I can get the maximum height.
I, I thought the Hanover explanation, actually, I could understand this one from Hanover, I thought that was detailed.
I like that, too.
Yeah, but...
We've been out, Rob.
I have been, and that's okay.
Okay, so parking and loading, it didn't change anything from the old ordinance.
Nope.
Exterior lighting, um, okay, so here's, Kurt and I have a disagreement on that. Go to 1828. Alright, so, um... These definitions are not used in the ordinance. So my question is, why are they there? These definitions are in the site plan review regulations, and they are referred to in the site plan review regulations. So, not a hill I'm gonna die on, but it just felt like, why are, why are they in the ordinance?
Right.
The arguments, because a number of years ago, we had two sets of definitions, one in the zoning regs, one in site plan, and probably a third one in subdivision.
Right.
And they started to conflict, because we were making amendments and changing things, but not cross-referencing stuff. So we decided to put all the ordinance, all the definitions in one place, and thought that the zoning regs was the best place, 'cause that's what gets voted on at town meeting. That way, if there's any change, it has to go through a warrant article and town meeting.
Right.
You can just put them in as an appendix, without having them in the, in the need of the requirements.
But if you want them to be adopted at town meeting, they have to be in the zoning regs.
But the appendix is in the reg, isn't it? It would be in the document.
Yeah, well, that's how they currently are, so I don't know what's, what Tim is trying to eliminate, other than, because these terms are not in the zoning regs, but they're in the subdivision regs.
Yeah, in one place, in the subdivision regs, so that's where you, that's where they live, that's where you amend them, that's where you change them, that's where you add to them.
See, that's, see, that's what we were doing in things, guys. There's other things that might be in subdivision regs and in the zoning regs, and if you start, and you get stuck going back to having two sets of definitions that conflict.
So if somebody is doing a commercial whatever that doesn't require any subdivision, we're gonna do site plan, but we're not necessarily able to refer to these definitions.
No, no, it goes, you look at the definition, where is the town definition for this item? You look at the page that says definitions, and you scroll down until you find that, and see if that word is there.
And they're in the site plan review regulations.
Well, we can take them, we can take them out of there if you want, and have them, why don't we eliminate them from the site plan regulations?
Well, I, I, I'm with Kurt, I think I'm with Kurt, in saying that they should be in the zoning regs as part, as part of the whole definition section.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
All definitions, I, right, all definitions should be on one section, and in the zoning regs, either as in a, you know, the back of the...
In the appendix.
In the appendix, but this is where you find your definitions.
Right.
I agree, and take them out of site plan.
And take them out of site plan.
You can take them out of site plan, and just say...
And take them out of subdivision, and take them out of, just leave them in one spot.
You know, what you're gonna find, that if you're going through the site plan or review regulations, there are a lot of definitions there that don't appear in the zoning ordinance.
No, but it's, they're, that's why you go to the section that says definitions, appendix A, definitions.
In the site plan review regulations.
No, no, in zoning, in zoning, in your zoning.
You're saying like a master definition test, instead of having it each individual corresponding.
Well, okay, if we did that, you, we would have to go through the site plan review regulations, as they're currently written, there are a number of terms in there that are not defined here in this ordinance.
Yeah, well, there were...
They're defined in the site plan review regulations.
So we need... I'm not sure about that, because we haven't updated our site plan or subdivision regs in over 10 years.
Right.
So, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a definition, a specific definition, there may be words there that are undefined, I agree with that, there's probably a lot of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
But if I was a, something says this means this.
And something as technical as these lighting is an example, I, I just, the best place to do with them is in the SBRs, when you can, you don't have to go to town meeting to, to get a definition approved.
Well, that, in that case, they would not necessarily apply to a residential, single-family duplex.
Yeah, well, right now, the only requirements in the existing ordinance provide that something applies to a single-family home, or anything that didn't require SBRs.
Right.
Is listed here. Lighting should be located in the...
I think it's just a matter of having one master list of definitions, and that gets voted on by the town, saying, these are the definitions we are going to use for this use.
I, I caution that a little bit, just because I think, Tim, you're gonna have a point with the technicality side, like, in your, again, I think, way I explain it, your zoning ordinance is your law, right? It's your laws of how things are set, your site plan and your subdivision is how those are enacted and applied, how you do that. So your zoning says you need to have lighting that's sufficient for X, Y, Z, if you go to commercial, or you get, you need to get kicked over to site plan. Then site plan says, okay, this is how you're gonna apply those lighting, we're gonna say you need X, Y, Z, and it takes it another step, that's a little more technical, and I think, to that sense, some of those definitions aren't really in the law, they're in the application of the law.
Oh.
But I see what you're saying about master lists.
I'm starting to agree. Let's look at, let's, line 1859, the ratio of four to one, that means that if they don't meet that ratio, they have to go to the zoning board?
Right, if they're not meeting something in this.
Do they have to get either a special exception or a variance, because they wanna have less lighting than we say they have to have?
Well, no.
Because you're mixing stuff up here, you're mixing up a requirement with a definition.
Yeah.
So if you have a separate document, it's the way our organizations did it, you have a separate document that's just definitions, no requirements, it just defines each of these terms, home house on, limit, light, trespass, whatever it is, and you have that as a separate document, it can be referred to whether you're doing site, or whether you're doing a zoning ordinance. But it's separate from all of those documents, it's a document of itself.
Right, but the definitions are a part of the document.
The definitions are part of that new document that defines this term, but to start putting regulations into it, no, you don't do that, the regulations go in whatever document that refers to, whether it's the site plan or a zoning ordinance.
This is just defining what that term means.
It's all it is, it's all...
Not how it's implemented, it's just defining the term.
Right.
So that means, we rewrite the SBR, rewrite the SBR, if we come up with a term...
Then we have to go back and put it in zoning.
Well...
Or it's your master document, your master definitions document.
We don't have a master definition.
That's the point, is that you're mixing stuff up here, and that's what's causing this 10-minute discussion, if we separated definitions out, and then applied them wherever you wanted to, it would be much easier, because it's gonna get convoluted every time you try to include it in that zoning ordinance or into the site plan.
So they're not in, it's referred.
Right.
In the SBR, it's referred to this, and that's all it is, there's nothing else other than referring to this.
But that's not what it does.
But it's going to.
Right, it needs to.
It has to.
He's not saying to this thing, he's saying to a third document.
Well, no, what I'm saying, when I say that, I mean, to the definitions, to the appendix, everything's gonna refer to it, rather than restating it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I think your CO still, I think they still had need to have definitions technically, it might be a question for legal, I think your zoning ordinance would still have to define...
It absolutely has.
Definitions, like some definitions, it wouldn't have to go into all of them.
But if I do that, but I don't have to put them anyplace else.
Put it in definitions.
But I, I think legal counsel on something else that I had come up against, it was like, you know, is this in your zoning, or is this in your site plan, or do you follow, and it's, to, someone made the comment earlier about, like, if it's in your site plan or subdivision, the board can just hold a public hearing and change definition. But if you need to change a definition for some reason in zoning...
You've gotta go...
You gotta go to ballot, so it'd be very, put what you need to put in definitions for zoning, but the technical stuff, and if you wanna have a master definition document, like that, just to pull it all together for ease, is one thing, but I think, and again, maybe that's a question for town council, as to definitions, locations.
What is it today?
The only definitions in the zoning ordinance are those terms that occur in the zoning ordinance that need a definition.
Okay, then we, then...
Oh, I'm, you're saying...
We need to leave it alone.
These, these lighting definitions are not in the zoning definitions, regs?
No.
There's no reference, there's no, the word disability glare does not appear in the zoning.
No, no, not in the, not in the word document, but in the sections, in the current zoning, on definitions.
It is right here, for today, yes, but it's not, to Tim's point, it's not used anywhere.
It's not used in the zoning permitted uses.
Maybe it was...
Anywhere.
Way back.
Right, right, because...
Well, can we leave it like it is?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm saying you get rid of this, and we're leaving exactly what's there today.
I think it's a risk. I think just leaving the definitions alone, where they are right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying, leave them like they are today, don't change anything.
Yeah.
That's a risk?
No, no, I thought you meant, I thought you meant to delete the, this terminology from the definitions.
I'm saying, don't change anything.
Yeah, I agree.
We can revisit this another day.
We're now at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Only, sorry, alright. We're halfway through. So, three quarters.
Say two, I'm gonna record.
No, halfway, halfway.
Halfway. Exactly.
Let's see, oh, Paul actually... Changed the, that last, scroll down just slightly backwards, item D, item D, line 1876, we had some better wording for that, which I incorporated. I don't know if you're okay with that or not, but... Now, that is not in the existing zoning ordinance. It's just a pet peeve of mine, so we can take it out, I won't argue.
Philosophically, I like it, but we're not supposed to be confessing with anything other than three new districts.
Right.
Let's put it in next year.
Okay.
Two, two.
Alright. Size. I don't think there's any... Uh, 2148, site distances. Actually, I have no changes for that, um... Let's see, section 406.
Yeah, there was some minor changes there.
2184. Kurt suggested we get rid of this sentence.
Yeah, I'm thinking on the map, I don't know if anybody's actually tried to look at that map, I've never seen the official one at town office, but the one that's in the actual zoning is an eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece of paper for the whole town. Sort of like, you'd find the red line on that.
Yeah. Should we delete it?
To the SES soils map?
I think, again, we just shouldn't be making changes, because it doesn't, it doesn't have any...
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is a language from way back.
But again, like, once we start making changes, then it's like, what else did you change?
Right.
And we're here, we're not making changes.
We made a commitment, we're basing the three districts, and that's it.
And this is very clear, it's as a guide, it's not some mandatory, it's something that's gonna cause a problem, it's cleaning things up, but we're not cleaning things up right now.
Right.
What does that CS stand for?
Soil Conservation Service, which has now been replaced by Natural Resource Conservation Service.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, no, Kurt's correct, but we're not trying to clean up.
No, no, I'm not trying to change it, I just wanna know what it is.
Yeah, I know.
So April 1st, we start working on.
Alright, so 2267. Probably the same argument.
The same argument, same issue.
Needs to be changed, but not now.
Okay, and this one is your...
Just don't delete this, this copy, so you already have it prepared.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, I know.
Save off a copy. Okay, 2326. Special flood hazard, and I am not gonna argue...
It says floor hazard.
This is, yeah, federal and state, we can't... So all that stays.
It has to stay.
Let's see, accessory dwelling units, 2359. Let's see, accessory dwelling units, 2359. The only thing I did here in the existing ordinance was just try to be consistent with the terminology we've been using. Instead of single family, multi-family, we wouldn't call them that, single unit dwelling and multi-unit dwelling.
Twenty-three seventy-four. Single unit dwelling, I think you want single dwelling unit. Twenty-three seventy-four, did we crack that? Single unit dwelling, that's 2375.
It is single unit dwelling.
You want single unit dwelling or single dwelling unit?
Single unit dwelling. Because the dwelling is the building.
Got it.
It's got one unit.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Home based business communications tower, which puts you asleep. Excavation subdivisions, 2748.
We're not messing with subdivisions at all. But you want to do something on back lots and flag lots.
It's not addressed in the existing ordinance and.
Yeah, and we've made them, so we've got to.
Just flag lots though now.
Just flag lots.
Yeah, not back lots.
Right.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, you have to because you've.
And that's an addition. It's not changing any others.
Right.
It's consistent with the changes that were proposed.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, yeah, so what you've got in your hard copy is. Sorry. That wording, wording in red, just scratch that out because we just went through all this.
Where, what page are you looking at?
102.
The new definitions for the flag lots.
Anything in red?
I think it's probably only up on the screen. Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
So just disregard that wording in red.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know what. Open space cluster development. Future. Yeah, 2889. I guess. Oh, yeah. These references are out of date.
Right.
The whole thing's out of date.
Yeah.
The whole chapter's out of date.
Yeah.
You know?
But we're not to change it.
No.
Should we just leave it in?
Leave it in and when we redo the subdivision.
Yeah.
Hopefully next year, we'll do it then.
Okay, impact fees, no change there. Nonconformities.
It's changed, but you don't have.
Change, oh, yeah. Thirty-one twenty-one.
Thirty-one twenty-one.
So. Kurt, you want to address this one?
Yeah, let me raise this issue. So. I don't have it on my paper. Okay, they're not, I like them. What was my notes? Okay. So the section in green.
How about we just delete it?
What?
How about we just delete it?
Is there anything existing today? But.
Well, I think it just eliminates the confusion. I, my concern, I mean, the discussion about was making a nonconforming lot less conforming. And we had that discussion several months ago. And the wording in green right now eliminates that potential. Because it says, no existing nonconforming lot shall be made less nonconforming. You can't create a new nonconforming lot. And you can't make a pre-existing nonconforming less nonconforming. And then.
But the one, with the one we had a couple of months ago made a lot of sense.
Yeah, but one of those lots was, was it, had larger acreage than what was required. We didn't make two nonconforming lots less conforming.
Right.
And we didn't make, and one of those lots wasn't made less nonconforming, not by us. Now, the ZBA can do that if they want, but we, but we don't. So if there was a boundary line adjustment between, and one of the lots was nonconforming. The second lot had extra acreage by zoning to give to the nonconforming lot.
So that's up to zoning.
Right, so it would go to zoning.
It goes to zoning.
Would go to zoning. But we, but we're not going to permit it.
No. But.
And that's what this says.
I wish I had never.
But we're not now. We're not permitting it now.
Right, well, what's the original language?
Well, I think, I try to rewrite on that because I spent about five minutes trying to interpret it. And what I said was, a new lot shall not be created that is nonconforming to zoning regulations. Also, an existing nonconforming lot shall not be altered so as to render an additional nonconformance. Because actually, there's a double negative in there that makes it very confusing.
Right.
A currently nonconforming lot can be altered only to lessen the nonconformance or eliminate it. I think it, first of all, it removes the double negative.
Yeah.
And I think it's easier to understand the intent of what that, what I think you were originally trying to do, Tim.
One minor suggestion, the no new lot should be created through subdivision. We had had a case where somebody created a new lot through a merger.
Right.
Which was still nonconforming.
Right. But it was less.
It was less. But you just say no new lot created through subdivision.
Right.
Then the mergers are allowed.
Right, the mergers are.
Because if somebody wants to merge two.
Yeah, yeah.
How about we do this? What if we just eliminated E, left everything exactly as it is in the old ordinance?
What was, what was the issue with the old ordinance? I mean, why are we changing it?
I, I thought I was helping, and I think it was just the wrong approach.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah.
Because I don't have the old ordinance. I don't know what the language was there.
The old ordinance is in the blue.
I don't have the blue on this.
Yeah, you do, looking over. It was A through B, A through E and F.
Leave it.
We'll deal with that another day.
Another day.
The ZBA made their own recommendations for wording changes. And apparently they researched it and came up with what they did.
Okay.
Kurt, you had a question on line 3180.
Thirty-one what? Oh, there you go. Thirty-one eighty. Yeah, it's just a technicality mostly. The way it's currently worded, the concurring votes of the majority of the seated board members. If you have four, so you need three votes, but if three people are sitting, majority is two.
Right.
Which doesn't.
Does not constitute.
No, furthermore, it says you must have paid. But I'm just saying, the majority, just eliminate the majority.
Right.
The word majority. So it reads, the concurrent votes of the seated board members.
Was a minimum of three votes is required.
Yes, yes.
Right.
So I have 380, 3180 includes that.
Right.
It just eliminates any kind of confusion.
Right.
It's like an applicant, he's, they have never been voted, a board before is confused.
Well, it's the same as the planning board. If there's only five seated, you still have to have four. Because you have to have a minimum of four of the total number of board members.
Right, yeah, majority. Right, there a majority would apply.
Right.
Of the seated members.
Right.
And you can have four members, which is a quorum. A four is a quorum.
Right.
So you could have, so there a majority of the.
As long as it's unanimous, it goes. If it's not unanimous, it doesn't go.
You need a majority of the seat.
No, you need a majority of the total number of.
Planning board members.
Seats.
You need four. That's why we say to everybody, you understand, we do not have a full board tonight. You have the right to wait until there's a full board.
I have to look that one up because I thought it was just majority.
You got to have four votes.
Okay.
Because if you, if you had.
Because if you did.
If you had two people.
That's, that's a separate argument.
Yeah, it's a separate argument.
Okay.
That's why you have alternates.
Yeah.
All right, so what are we changing and not changing?
We got to change it. It's the zoning board. If not, they'll put it in themselves.
Well, no, I mean.
No, just delete the word majority.
Yeah, just delete the word majority and the rest.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was with a minimum of three votes.
It is, but it's, it's not a majority. It's a minimum of three votes.
It's not a majority of the seated board members. It's concurrent votes of seated board members with a minimum of three votes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Land plan development conservation, oh, yeah. Thirty-three forty-four.
All right.
Flood plan.
Oh, wait, wait, section 909, oops.
What line was it, Kurt?
Three-two-nine-three.
Three-two-nine-three, okay.
Now, it does state this further on, but this is a separate section. And that's why I think it should say, the zoning board of adjustment and the planning board may require a special blah, blah, blah. It's not related to the zoning board because their section is.
This is zoning's section.
This is our.
This is ZBA.
This is ZBA's section, not ours.
And we do.
Okay, okay.
We do talk about that in site plan and subdivision.
Never mind.
Yeah.
Okay, it's article versus section. Okay, that's why I lost it.
Flood plan development ordinance.
Flood planning is all mandated.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I'm not going to die on this.
We can't do anything in that. If your paragraph in the red should be deleted. Because it's flattery. Oh, I'm sorry, never mind. Land conservation commission.
You actually agreed with me on that.
Yeah.
You actually agreed with me previously about this flood plan ordinance. What it really boiled down to is, do we give the flood plan development ordinance, ordinance an article number? Or does it just sit at the back of the ordinance as its own?
As appendix B or whatever.
Appendix.
Because it's formatted differently than anything else.
Because it comes from the state and the feds.
It's actually directly from the feds.
It's in the zoning regs, but as an appendix.
Right, because it comes directly from the feds.
Yeah, yeah.
The entire wording is the feds. And you have to, you have to adopt the federal, the federal wording and format and the whole deal.
So, line 3344, conservation commission. The only, the only thing I can think of is why this is here is it probably was, I have no idea why this is here.
Well, it's a land use board.
Right.
That's the only thing that I can think of.
Yeah, me too.
Like, it's same back with the CEO districts.
Well, no, it's, it's the same as why the ZBA's is in here. The conservation commission is another land use.
Yeah, but this doesn't, if you read through this, it talks about what the responsibilities of the CC is.
Yeah.
What their duties are. And these do not.
We're not changing it.
These do not coincide with anything in the RSA's.
Nope.
So what the hell is this here for?
We're not changing it tonight.
Didn't we have a petition a couple of years ago and town council said.
You can't do that.
Why is, why is this part of the zoning regs to begin with?
Yep.
So.
And it didn't pass, did it? Because we tried to get rid of it.
It didn't.
What was it? What was it?
I don't remember the specifics of it.
Yeah, because it was a part of the RSA. Or was it, it wasn't, it's not ours to get rid of.
Yeah, I mean, the.
Pretty much.
The attorney said this is not a zoning reg.
Right.
The conservation commission and they have their.
We tried to get rid of it and they, and we couldn't get rid of it.
We couldn't get rid of the article?
Well, no, we couldn't get rid of it because it was voted down.
Right.
The one with the article was voted down.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt anything being there.
No, it doesn't hurt anything, exactly.
The only thing I think I think of is maybe when it was first started is sometimes zoning board or planning boards have in their requirements, right? That you like, you need to consult with conservation or get comments from the conservation commission.
And that's what got it in, it was probably pre-zoning.
Starting.
Right, that's what I'm saying with the CEO.
It's another CEO, it's pre-zoning.
Jim Gurney is, a lot of this probably came from him.
And we have to live with it.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to live with it, but if you, if you want to, if you want to live with it, it's a choice.
It's, it's, it doesn't hurt anything being there either.
I, I think it's just confusing with all of the other RSA's and whatever else.
We can put this in an appendix. Just move this to an appendix.
Right, it's not today's discussion.
Yeah, it's for another day, another year.
How about moving it to an appendix? Could we do that?
We're going to move forward. Your next yellow stuff.
Yes, we can, we can move it to an appendix if the group would like to.
Yeah, as it stands.
As it stands.
Right, yeah. Just make that an appendix.
That I don't have a problem with because you're not, you're not.
We're not changing the thing.
You're putting it in the appendix?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that compliment. So, definition. And we're done. Well, not quite.
Page 133?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Page 133, 134, 135. I'm not sure why these are in yellow. Structure is the one we need to focus on.
Okay.
So, 3698.
I have 3707 for structures.
I've got 3651.
I've got 3698 on my, on one printed copy.
It's crossed out.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's setback.
Structure.
Which talks about structure.
Is 3707.
So the board tasked Rob to come up with a new definition for structure some months ago.
Right.
And, and he, this is what's, what he came up with is what's in the yellow.
Oh, that's why we got the.
Is that right, Rob? This what you wrote, right?
One of the key things there is just the, just the line break there. The, the old formatting, it was like, kind of a quick transition to what was carved out of.
Right.
Setback requirements. Now you sort of can push it down with a little bit of a line break there and give you some.
I think I need to do an indent. Were days there a state definition for structure?
Were days there a state definition for structure?
It's a great question. My computer died. I don't think that the RSA does define structure. I think this is pretty spot on with what other CEOs kind of have. I think the permanently constructed or permanently placed. I think the temporary... Well, I think you speak to it somewhere else, but like, anything less than thirty days is sometimes considered temporary. So like, if you get to something where a shed is movable, but it's mostly there.
But it never moves.
There are really moves, but like, is it, you know?
It's on wheels.
It's not.
It's on four flat wheels.
And one other change that I put in there was...
The shed moves and now has adverse possession.
And that was something that's starting to come up.
Attached to, yeah.
Like a projection, an awning.
Right.
By our current definition, we have seen at least one example of somebody trying to use, well, you said in or upon the ground.
Right.
My awning is not in or upon the ground. It's bolted onto another building and it projects out. Well, now, the only change I've added here to that is that it's attached to something that's in or upon the ground essentially. I don't know if you guys... So we have tons of ice fishing, right? That's happened. I think that the history there was people would drag their ice fishing bough house off of the water up onto their shoreline.
Yeah.
And by our current definition, if you didn't carve that out, the bough house sitting there all summer is in violation.
Right.
So, that's why it's in there, I think. That's the history of it.
Why should it not be subject to setbacks? It's like a shed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, 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 obviously the history of the town being an ice fishing sort of mecca. That was why it was put there in the first place. I've not interested to take it out, but if you guys want us to get out, we can.
Definitely far more movable.
Right.
Regular shed.
Yeah.
Do move.
Yeah, they're designed to be moved.
Well, and they do move them.
They have steel legs.
Yeah, but it's a ticket.
I do, on the setback section, I just, we can just change wetlands to water bodies.
Line...
Wait a minute, I thought we were going the other way.
I thought we were going with structures.
Because now I'm gonna bring up, I think, I think we should include parking as one of the exemptions.
I do too.
It says driveways.
No, but it says parking lots.
I consider that as a structure.
See, you could have a, you could have a driveway that goes right up to property line. Just a straight driveway that ends.
Right.
You stack your cars on top.
Right, but you can't turn.
Is it a driveway or is it a parking lot?
This came up with yours.
Right, exactly.
And this is one of those...
Right.
There, you create, so many lots in town, all over town are non-conforming. If you're not allowed to park in the setback.
Right.
So we need to allow parking in setbacks.
And mine is one.
They're all over town. I know people in rural, in a rural area with a very large lot, but...
They park it right up because it's the best place to park.
Because they don't want a long driveway. They don't have to plow and stuff. And all through the village, certainly, the majority, I would say.
Of the parking lots?
Of the parking is in the setbacks.
In the setbacks, yeah.
So, I mean, I think just the second one, you just add... Because it came up because the first paragraph includes parking lots as a structure. The second paragraph does not include parking lots as an exempt. So we should, just need to include it as exempt.
How about parking lots of less than five spaces?
I was just gonna say, so I just looked, you don't have a definition for parking lot.
Right.
So like driveway residential use.
Right.
You should be able to park a couple of cars in your driveway. It's not a parking lot.
Parking lots of less than five.
Right.
At my house, I don't park in a parking lot. I park in a driveway.
Yeah, if you create a definition for parking lot and say a parking lot is, a town of Enfield is seen as anything over eight.
X number of spaces.
Yeah, X number of spaces, that's a parking lot.
Right.
Then you get into where it's not.
I love your idea.
And then into four, you still gain some because you have that certain thing right now. But it clears it up that your driveway, you should be able to park in a residential driveway. And it'd be okay. Yeah, so.
So what's the magic number? Five, six?
I'd say five.
Where did we draw the line? Four, was it at six, Tim?
Well, residential goes becomes commercial. How many units?
Well, it becomes four units. But there was a number of, at one point we discussed the number of parking spaces, at which point someone would need more, you know, drainage control. I forget if it was six or eight.
You took that out, but...
No, but that was a thought out number. That would be sort of, you know, below this number, you are free to do, if you choose above that number, you know...
I don't remember what it was.
I don't remember.
Well, six would be adequate. Six would be adequate.
Well, let's see, are there any...
I mean, if you had like a two-car, a two-bay garage, you could park three cars in the driveway. And that would be reasonable.
Well, parking lots are commercial. They're not single-family homes.
What about...
Not as friendly defined.
Well, I know, but that's how people would interpret a parking lot.
I know.
You don't say, I'm going home, I'm gonna park my parking lot.
Yeah, so maybe it is, you do it by the number of units.
Right.
And you do it with the, up to four units, you don't have to worry about it.
Right.
And above four units, you do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Resummarize that. Translate it into verbiage.
One of the exemptions is...
Parking lots for residential use.
With less than five.
For residential uses below, with four units or less.
Four units or less are exempt.
That gives you the possibility of eight parking spaces if the landlord goes...
Yep, because she's a possibility. Wow, but it's still only four units.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the one thing that I...
But there's a disconnect there. If a four-unit place could have twelve parking spaces, and he'd be okay and not have to meet any special requirements versus a twelve-unit apartment house with twelve spaces that would have to meet those requirements.
Yep.
It doesn't seem fair.
I don't think it should be tied to units, it should be number of spaces.
Number of spaces.
Number of spaces.
So number of spaces.
Because that gives you one per unit plus two extra.
Right.
Basically saying you can park up to four cars.
Six spaces or less.
Well, I think six would be the right number.
Six.
Because then you can have a guest space, because most people would prefer to have a couple of guest spaces than do what, like I currently do, which is park my lawn.
Right.
Six it is.
Okay.
Right, okay. The one thing I would like to add to this is, as an exempt, is a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A what?
Retaining wall is not a structure.
I think that was a bit weird, because you built your retaining wall right on your property line.
Nothing wrong with that, is it?
Oh, yeah. So you don't have to fix it. Don't like your neighbor.
Well, it's set in a little bit.
Is a stone wall necessarily a retaining wall?
No.
No.
No. No, it's a freestanding wall.
Right.
It could be, yeah.
I've got a stone wall.
Retaining wall is retaining something.
A lot of retaining walls aren't stone.
So, we then say, retaining walls and stone walls.
Yeah.
Stone walls are...
Right, that's what I mean.
They're already there.
Yeah.
Stone walls is two words, not one?
Yep.
No.
No?
No, it's actually one word.
It's one word?
Stone wall is one word.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
It always corrects me when I type it, I'm typing that out.
Yeah.
I think of stone walls as stonewalling. I don't want to hear anymore about it.
Are we, are we good with structure?
That's how I think of it, is one word.
Yeah. Are we good with structure?
Yeah.
Just before we go to touch setbacks, I would just change the word wetlands to water bodies to cover rivers and streams and all that stuff.
We just said wetlands were water bodies.
We eliminated it.
No, there's a specific definition for water, wetlands. There is.
Well, then why did we get rid of it five times before?
We didn't. We didn't. I discussed that, but... There is... There was two sections in that, and there's a definition for wetlands. And it's, and it's not a river.
Yeah, I know.
So...
Does anyone have the red book with the definitions in it?
All right, let's go to...
Every place where you said you were taking out water bodies, Tim?
Yes.
We just put them back in.
Well, good.
But is water bodies the official? I changed the malt to bodies of water.
We need to legal that term. It's used in the RSA's, that we need.
Yeah.
All right, and section on, okay.
It's in the village district, wasn't it? Those are choices.
Who's that beginning?
Right.
Yeah, because it's water frontage, waterfront property, then wetlands are the definitions. That's what you... So, a description of a wetland is soils and plants and not flowing with a...
Or a lake.
On a lake, a pond.
So here's the definition in our existing ordinance and in the new ordinance. Twenty-one seventy-eight, if you wanna...
Wetland area.
Line twenty-one seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned...
Water bodies.
Four bodies.
Four bodies.
Oh, it's all, it's on, the water bodies are all on the tables. That's where we said water bodies. It's all on the table, so we can leave.
Right, I mean, right, a wetland is a type of water body, but not all water bodies are wetlands.
Okay, I agree.
That's, that's the issue.
Okay, so we'll just leave them in the table.
Right.
They're in the table, they're in the table.
Now, there was some questions on the land use table.
Yeah.
Honestly can't remember why, in the residential section I had, there's two items highlighted in yellow, dwelling double and dwelling multi. Just to check whatever they are today and even...
Right.
Yeah, let's just skip over that.
Yes, you can't change them.
All right.
Just need to change them here, but change them there.
Manufactured housing park, that's on page two. We're allowing that in the EBD.
Right.
EBD is a special exception.
Yeah.
The manufactured housing park is two or more manufactured houses.
Yeah.
Given what the EBD is and the land available for that, it just seems like, I think I was just questioning, do you really want to do that?
What, special exception down top?
Yeah, I would put, no. Anyway.
Yeah.
Any thoughts? Fine. Either way.
Are we allowed to restrict them under state law? Because they just changed that, I think.
Yes, because we have, we have plenty of other places where they're permitted.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a no?
I mean, someone could still stick a mobile home in on a such law.
Yeah, but only one.
But only one.
All right. Let's see. Okay, page three. This is just the definition of a bed and breakfast. I cited the RSA plus also provided the existing zoning ordinance. And you'll note there are some differences. It seemed to me like the existing zoning ordinance was awfully prescriptive there.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I would say is the default. I mean, that's, it's gonna overrule anything that we do anyways.
Right, so you gotta go with the RSA.
Okay. Contractors yard. So, these definitions in green, the reason they're in green is those definitions weren't in, weren't provided the last time we reviewed this. And so I've drafted up or found definitions for those missing ones in here now. You either like them or you don't.
The only thing I might change on brewery is bottling, warehousing, or shipping. Because I may not be shipping from there.
Well, that's your choice, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, and/or slash or...
Yeah.
Whether that...
Yeah, contractors yard. So, when we look at the, at the description now...
Yeah.
I think that's why I've got these others in orange, is maybe we should reconsider these. Still with us? And then, in the village district, it didn't seem to be like something that you'd really want to promote.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of my red flags too, sort of like...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, doesn't fit there.
No.
So that's come to no.
They're allowed and root for it and see.
Yeah, we're sorry.
Okay, so page four.
Yeah.
Funeral room. Hotel, okay.
Sure.
So hotel, I just gave you the, that, there's no definition or hotel in the zoning ordinance, but, but motel is, is listed. Anyway.
Over at the end it says the shall include hotel?
Well, yes, that is, that is true.
But, yeah, leave it up.
Anyway.
Reading and children say, you have B and B, short-term rental, falls under that definition.
Except that it doesn't have enough units. When you go to license at B, at B and B, that's through the state.
Yeah.
They multiple accommodation rooms.
Yeah. But suppose they did argue that.
Why, why, why would you, how would you say no? I mean, you have multiple rooms with different guests, there's a kitchen.
Right, uh, well, so you're in, it's only allowed in two districts, EVD and EV four presently, right? You want to put a hotel in, um-
No, I'm talking about, I'm just saying that's, that definition, say, you're calling it a hotel, but that's the def, what you, in black is what a short-term rental is. So you may, you may want to rethink.
Yeah, but the only thing you could keep, confuse it with is with a bed and breakfast, but a bed and breakfast is specifically licensed by the state.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a specific definition by the state, so if you brought a, uh, if you brought a bed and, bed and breakfast proposal to the board-
No, I'm talking about Airbnb, just short-term rental. Someone who wants to do a short-term rental, the town does a-
That's not a, that's not a land use that we're regulating.
Anyways, it's just something that's-
I tell you what, if you can come up with some words to add to that, let me know by tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll stay here tonight and work on it.
The more interesting one is if you have only three bedrooms, it's not a bed and breakfast. If you, if you have only three rentable rooms, it's not a bed and breakfast.
Really?
Has to be at least four.
For the RSA.
So I don't have to get anything approved.
Right.
If I've got three. It's still a single family home. And I have guests.
It's fine.
You're, you're now a hotel because you have multiple rooms.
I mean-
Underneath in blue, it's saying ten or more people.
Multiple combination rooms.
Triggers-
Four or more.
Triggers it, I mean, why are we changing it?
You know, that's what it says here, multiple combinations of whatever that is.
Under the blue. Four or more.
That was the exception.
It's four or more.
Okay. Well, there are such things as micro hotels that have two rooms, three rooms.
Three.
Yeah.
It's not a problem, I feel.
It's not a problem.
Yeah. Okay, um, go to page five. Outdoor firearms range, I suggest we just completely eliminate that from the land use table.
You can't.
Because-
Cause it's an allowed use by state law.
And it's-
Yeah.
No, hang on, it, it's not an allowed use in the existing zoning ordinance. And I just shouldn't have even put it in here.
Where did you put it?
Page five.
Page five, commercial land use and stuff.
Right, currently, we don't-
We don't have a-